Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the Town Council Regular Meeting of the Town of Fairfax. And this is Wednesday, October 16th. It's 6:30 PM. And this is a hybrid meeting at the Fairfax Women's Club and via Zoom. We're at 46 Park Road, Fairfax, California. And I... Somebody say something? Um, I'd like, folks, if you would like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town... Oh, I'm sorry. I need something before then. Um, one of our members is apparently a little tardy, but let's go ahead and do roll call. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Present.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here. And right now, we have Councilmember Kachano.
Is absent.
Okay, I think, no, he's not here. Okay. And approval of the agenda. Could someone make a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, so that was Vice Mayor Blash, second, Councilmember Hellman. Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay. And I will go ahead and read the land acknowledgement now in the right space. So the Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. Meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. The Town Council will review the agenda at 10 o'clock PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Want to remind folks that we're all neighbors here. Let's do our best. We've got a full house. So on presentations, I just want to let folks know public comment for presentation items will happen once rather than after each individual presentation. During the public comment period on presentation, speaker may comment on any item from this section of the agenda. Each speaker will have up to two minutes and may only speak once. And I want to move something ahead where I've been assured I don't need a motion for this. So we have in our midst Felix Shuldiner as honorary mayor for the day. Felix is sitting to my left and Felix will be pretty much running the meeting, maybe with a little help from me from this time forward. But I want to also just share a little bit about mayor for the day. I had this idea several months ago based on understanding that some other councils in other parts of California actually have mayor of the day for a youth member. And while a youth member cannot vote, they can actually run the meeting. And I think this is a great opportunity. I went to our Parks and Recreation Commission with this idea. Maria Staff, just raise your hand, is our staff to park. And I asked them to take it and run with it. And they did so. And they came up with a program and through their selection process selected Felix to run the meeting. I want to just say a few words about Felix. And it looks like we have Councilmember Kachano joining us. So Felix wrote me a little bio. He's a 12th grader at Archie Williams High School, and he's lived in Fairfax for 14 years, although his mother says 15 years. He's interested in science, biology, and politics, and he does a little cooking on the side. He's the captain of the Archie Williams Mountain Biking Team and has been riding bikes on trails and roads for his whole life. And he wrote an article on e-bikes and bike safety for the Ross Valley Reporter. He also loves horseback riding, hiking, and skiing. And when I first met with Felix and his dad, one of the things he told me about, he'll be going to college soon, is that he's interested in molecular biology and genetics. But also, I'd like to read his paper that he submitted for nomination. It's short. Sorry, Felix, I'm gonna embarrass you. If I were mayor for a day, I would protect our townspeople and support our downtown businesses. I would push for better bike infrastructure, and I would make the town of Fairfax a better place. The issues that are important to me as a student are reflected in what makes a town better. And my unique experience living in Fairfax as a consumer and commuter make me an expert on our businesses and parking, as well as how people move through our town. Additionally, being a cyclist has given me vast expertise on the hotly debated trails we are so lucky to have. I think my experience makes me well-suited for the position, and I think it would be really enjoyable. So before I turn it over to Felix, I want to present him with a couple of things that we brought for him. One of the things Felix said to me when I met with him and his dad is, do I get a gavel? So. We have for Felix honorary mayor for the day Felix Shuldiner, October 16, 2024. You might want to hold it up. And there's more. Okay, I can't open this. So, oh, there's this. We got you a pen that says Felix Shuldiner. And this is a bamboo pen, and it says honorary mayor for the day Felix Shuldiner. We may want to put this stuff over here.
Well, I'll keep the gavel.
There's, I know, you'll take the gavel. Okay. So, and then we also have a certificate of appreciation for Felix for serving as the Town of Fairfax's first mayor for a day on October 16, 2024, and demonstrating leadership, enthusiasm, and a commitment to civic engagement. Your contributions helped guide the meeting and inspired others to get involved in our community with gratitude and appreciation from the Fairfax Town Council, signed by me. And I believe there's also a name tag, but I think I've lost it. Oh, I think there's actually a real one, but the bag was broken, so we lost that. So with that, I'm gonna move this stuff. And then Felix, I'm moving this. So with that, we will move on to our first presentation and Go for it.
Okay. Well, we have some special presentations tonight. For our first presentation, I'd like to invite Police Chief Rico Tabaranza to come forward for the swearing in of Officer Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. How do you say that last name there, Mayor? How do you say the last name for me, Mayor? Thank you, Mayor Shuldiner. All right. Sounds good. But thank you, everyone here tonight. I would like to take this special moment to, one, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Town Manager, and staff for sharing this moment with us. Tonight is a very special moment, not only for our staff members, but a lot of their families are here in attendance this morning. So thank you for the five, 10 minutes that we have to do this here publicly. The reason why we do this now is because we value our partnership with the community. We do a lot of things, ups and downs, and sharing wins together is also a big thing. And here, we're creating milestones in the lives of very young men today, two of them. One is a cadet and one is a new officer. That's gonna be working on our community. So it's important for you to get to know them, see their families, hear about their stories. And then, as you see him out there, you have a connection with them. And that's what we strive here at Fairfax PD is to build that relationship with each other so that we work to deal with problems together and celebrate wins, all as a family, all as one. And so briefly, today is a badge pinning and an oath of office. So what that means for the family is it's a chance to celebrate an officer, or in this case, also a cadet's hard work and dedication, to get to this moment. Believe it or not, to get here is pretty rough, and it's also very selective. So this opportunity for them to walk in this career, it's very difficult. So it's celebrating with the family all their sacrifices to be here. The badge ceremony and the swearing in marks the beginning of a new officer's career and their commitment to serve the community. New officers are sworn in in a ceremony like this usually as tradition, but today we also include a cadet because here we value also the non-sworn partners that we have. And a badge for a community, it symbolizes an officer's or cadet's commitment to protect and serve with integrity and dedication. So with that, I'd like to call up those being recognized and taking the oath of office, Officer Oscar Fernandez and Cadet Christopher Hubbell. Please come up. And also, I'd like to call up Christine Foster, our deputy town clerk, who will be conducting the oath of office.
Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, we are now going to recite the oath of office. Please repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you. You clap for him. Okay, I'll start with calling up Cadet Christopher Hubbell, please. Please step forward. And if I can have his mother, who will be pinning him today, Gloria Hubbell, to step up next to him. Okay, so real briefly, I just want to talk about some of the things that he approved me to say about him. And his mom may not know about it, but here we go. So currently, Chris is working for Fairfax PD part-time. He started on July 16th this year. He is a Marin County resident. Uh, he currently is in school studying business administration, and he's a sophomore at SF State University. Is that correct? Well, how are your grades, though? All right. Got to have good grades, right? That's important. Uh, Christopher is fluent in Spanish, and working for Fairfax PD is the very beginning of his law enforcement journey. And fun fact, his father works at Peruva. He's the shop manager, and he's right up here, Dennis. You've probably seen him around. He's an integral part of the community as well. So we're very proud today. Chris aspires to be one day a police officer. I don't know if he wants to work here or anywhere, but this is the beginning, so we'll see where he goes. And in attendance, supporting him is his mom, Gloria, his younger brother Jonathan, and his father Dennis, and several friends here in the back. So what I'm gonna do now is do the pinning. So here's. Let's call up the family. You gonna take a photo?
Good.
So part of the law enforcement journey and dealing with the community is public speaking. So he gets two minutes to say something.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I just want to take a brief moment to thank the Town of Fairfax and everyone to give me this amazing opportunity. And so far, I've had an amazing time working alongside very great people. And here with here, me tonight, I would like to thank my mom, Gloria, my dad, Dennis, and my younger brother Jonathan for constant support. And yeah, I just want to say thank you for everyone who's given me this opportunity.
Okay, next up is Officer Oscar Fernandez. Please step up. And pinning him tonight is his wife, Lady Fernandez. Please come up. Okay, they're newly hired, so, I mean, not newly hired, newly married. Uh, she's hired too, I guess. But, uh, we are looking for somebody else. But they were married when, August 1st? That's right? July 6th. Okay. And have you gone on your honeymoon yet, or you've been working? Yeah, okay, good. Okay, so he was hired August 1st. There you go. I got the, I got the notes mixed up. So he's here today because he was in the police academy with Officer Malik Carter back there, and he was recommended. So thank you to him for getting him here. So he did a stint shortly with the Santa Rosa Police Department, correct? And he found a new home here at Fairfax PD. Again, he was a classmate of Officer Malik Carter back there, class 211, at the Santa Rosa Police, uh, Police Academy. And currently, right now, he's on the third phase of his field training program. So he's almost at the last phase, which is the fourth phase. Then he'll be on probation for a year after that to see if he stays at his new home in Fairfax. Or has to go back to Santa Rosa. I don't know. I was kidding. But, uh, okay, so he, uh, Oscar's passionate about powerlifting. He wanted to brag about his squats of 500 pounds, his deadlift of 645, and his bench of 275. So we'll see. We'll test him. One day, he aspires to be an FBI agent after obtaining some law enforcement experience. So in attendance today is his wife, Lady, and Mother Maria, and his friends in the back. So thank you. So I'm gonna give you the badge. All right, congratulations. All right, congratulations. Here you go.
How's everyone doing today? I'm just gonna be short, straight to the point. Uh, I just want to say thank you, first and foremost, to my family, to my wife, to my mom, for supporting me in this career. And also, thank you to all of you guys, to the audience here, for being here and sharing this moment with us. This is important for me as a police officer and for Cadet. This is a great accomplishment, and we are happy to see all of you guys' faces here with us tonight. But also, special thanks to all the town employees, and especially Chief Tabaranza, for giving me the opportunity to work for a beautiful town such as Fairfax. Thank you.
Congratulations. You guys, please sit down.
Chief, before folks leave, how about we have the two mayors take a picture with them?
Yes, please come up.
Congratulations and welcome, Officer Hernandez. Next, we will have a presentation and proclamation celebrating the 10th anniversary of Age Friendly Fairfax, followed by a video presentation. I would like to invite Recreation Services Manager Anne Mannes and Mayor Barbara Kohler to lead this.
Okay, well, I think Anne stepping up to the podium. What we may want to do before we show the video is maybe have, uh, our mayor read the two proclamations. What do you think? This is for age-friendly. Just, okay, so maybe for the two proclamations, we'll have, uh, our mayor for the day read the two proclamations. How about that? Okay, and then you'll go. Okay. Where is it? Okay, there's two. There's two. There's this one and then this. Yeah, no, there's another one. Here, I got it. Okay. Okay, so Felix will be reading the first proclamation for the 10-year anniversary.
Town of Fairfax Proclamation, celebrating Age Friendly Fairfax's 10th anniversary. Whereas, the Town of Fairfax took a significant step toward creating an inclusive and supportive environment for its older residents by submitting its application to the World Health Organization WHO for Age Friendly Designation on December 2014, and was proudly accepted into the global network of age-friendly cities on March 1st, 2015. And whereas, the Town of Fairfax, in recognition of the importance of supporting its aging population, formed an Age Friendly Task Force in late 2014 to actively engage community members and older adults in fostering a town that nurtures healthy and active aging. And whereas, in 2015, Fairfax became one of the first communities in Marin to be accepted into the World Health Organization's global network of for age-friendly cities and communities, setting a standard for others to follow. And whereas, from 2015 through 2016, the Age Friendly Task Force developed the Age Friendly Fairfax Community Assessment and Strategic Action Plan, here and after "the plan." And whereas, on January 2nd, 2018, Fairfax was notified that it was officially a member of AARP's Age Friendly Network. AARP has largely taken the lead for WHO for age-friendly initiatives. And whereas, since its inception, Age Friendly Fairfax has diligently served as a pillar of support for healthy aging, advocating for the improvement of public spacing spaces such as sidewalk repairs and the addition of new benches, enhancing the town's accessibility and making it a better place for all residents. And whereas, Age Friendly Fairfax has also championed affordable housing developments tailored to the needs of older adults, as well as supported the construction of accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and home-sharing initiatives, ensuring that our older residents have access to safe and affordable living options. And whereas, Age Friendly Fairfax has advocated for making our town more accessible for all, supporting the Town Sidewalk Cost Share Program, use of our pedestrian flags, flashing beacons at key crosswalks, cheering on reconstruction for our arcade parking area downtown, placing age-friendly benches throughout downtown and in our parks, and much more. And whereas, through the offering of free recreation classes, age-friendly social events, and educational forums, Age Friendly Fairfax has played a crucial role in keeping our community connected, combating isolation, and fostering friendships across generations. And whereas, the Fairfax Library has joined in these efforts by offering several classes and gatherings each munch, each month, further contributing to the town's age-friendly environment. And whereas, the Town of Fairfax annually celebrates the wisdom and contributions of our esteemed older neighbors who are 90 years and above, recognizing their vital role in our community. This year, the seventh annual celebration will be held on October 19th, 2024. And whereas, the Age Friendly Task Force's overarching goal was to enhance the age-friendliness of the Town of Fairfax. In 2023, the Task Force transitioned to a group of residents and other stakeholders who meet periodically to work on age-friendly projects in our town. The Town Council and the town remain steadfast in support of age-friendliness for Fairfax, and we will continue providing funding for AF activities and programs. And now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax do hereby proclaim the year 2024 as the 10th anniversary of Age Friendly Fairfax, and encourage all residents to join in celebrating this milestone, acknowledging the continued efforts to make Fairfax a more inclusive, supportive, and age-friendly community for all. Signed this day.
Got the next one.
The Town of Fairfax Proclamation, Ageism Awareness Day. Whereas, ageism refers to the stereotypes, how we think, prejudice, how we feel, and discrimination, how we act towards others based on age. And whereas, there are an esteemed 2,094 older adults in the Town of Fairfax older than the age of 60 who are impacted by ageism. And whereas, ageism towards older adults affects their health and longevity, financial well-being, and the economy of the Town of Fairfax. And whereas, preventing ageism in education, employment, housing, culture, and healthcare will benefit all. And whereas, recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that older adults are respected and portrayed as capable, competent, effective, and valued in all areas of society. And whereas, ageism awareness and preventing ageism is beneficial to all citizens of Fairfax by improving quality of life within the Town of Fairfax. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax do hereby proclaim, uh, October 16th, 2024, oh, October 9th, as 2024, as Ageism Awareness Day in the Town of Fairfax, California. I see.
Thank you. Thank you, Felix. Great job. Uh, before I introduce, um, our Anne Mannes, who's our staff for Age Friendly and more, and also Joseph Buneagle, who's our current chair of Age Friendly. I just want to mention, um, it's been a long road, and we've been very fortunate to have people in our community really involved in age-friendliness. And we've been able to make tremendous strides. And, uh, I just, some of our members are here tonight. But just want to say, um, as an added bonus, if you want to go to sleep tonight, you can read the 60 pages or so of the scorecard that I keep um, that I got assigned by Jody Timms, who was our prior chair, uh, a number of years ago. So there's a lot that's been done, and we're not done. So Anne, take it away.
Right. Can you hear me? Yeah, all good. Okay. Hi, um, Mayor, Mayors, and Council. Thanks for having me today. As the staff leaves on to this group, um, it's been a real honor. I've been with them since this inception. And I just will briefly read the current members to acknowledge them. And then, um, we'll turn to a, a video that, um, was, um, created, mainly with the generosity and, um, years of our artist and resident Stephanie Mohan. You will see in the video documentation that goes back 10 years of our community, and it's, it's precious. Um, and I'd also like to thank, um, the videographer who, um, David Driver, who also gave of his time to create it. So, um, you'll see that soon. But the current, um, members that I would like to acknowledge is Josephine, who is our chair, who will be speaking in a moment, Jody Timms, Jackie Engstrom, uh, Susan Bradberg, Iris Wasco, Karen Arnold, Mayor Kohler, and various invited stakeholders that
Jody Timms, you didn't mention Jody.
No, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The second, uh, the second one. Um, and then our invited stakeholders that participate in our program are the resident coordinators of the Bennett House and Victory Village, the Fairfax Library, Ross Valley Seniors, um, and several others. Um, and so, without further ado, I will let Josiah, our chair, speak, and then we'll show the video. Thank you.
Good evening.
You need to raise that up and get a little closer.
Good. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. My name is Joseph Buneagle, as you've heard. And on behalf of Age Friendly Fairfax, I want to thank all those who have volunteered, supported, and participated in Age Friendly over the past 10 years. As you've heard through this group's efforts and, as you have heard through this group's efforts and collaborations, there are fantastic exercise classes each month, which are faithfully organized by Anne Mannes, and are a huge hit. Without her, we would not have these. Also, we have monthly social breakfast gatherings in town, and our annual 90-plus celebration is this Saturday. Check out the Age Friendly pages on the Fairfax Town website, where you can also find our newsletter there, which has great information monthly. Lastly, I want to thank Anne again and David for spearheading and putting together the time to make this 10-year commemorative video happen. Thank you.
Originally, I learned about the Age Friendly international movement through the Commission on Aging. I was serving on that body on behalf of the Town of Fairfax, and learning a lot about aging and what was happening not only locally and in our county, but the state and the nation, and internationally. I was really excited to hear about a global movement that was paying attention to older adults and starting to encourage cities and communities to provide more services to folks who are older. We all get older, and it's not an easy process. So it's really wonderful to be able to connect with your community, to find out about resources, to learn more about the process of aging, how to manage it, how to have support, et cetera. And so it's important to continue to build community and find people and find like what's out there that could better support and serve, serve me and help me age with that kind of vitality and sensitivity that we all want in our lives. In 2015, the Town of Fairfax was one of the first in Marin to be accepted by the World Health Organization's Global Network for Age-Friendly Cities and Communities. Since then, Age Friendly Fairfax has served as an ongoing support for healthy and active aging. We advocate for the improvement of public spaces like sidewalk repair and adding new benches. It helps our aging population and makes the town a much better place for everyone. We also support affordable housing developments tailored to older adults, as well as accessory dwelling unit construction and home sharing. Our free recreation classes and age-friendly social events help keep us all connected, and they counter isolation and foster friendships. The Fairfax Library has joined in our age-friendliness by offering several classes and other gatherings each month. We also have an annual celebration to honor the wisdom and contributions of our 90 and above older neighbors. So stay informed through our website, newsletters, and Age Friendly forums and events, where we provide updates on topics such as employment, volunteer opportunities, emergency preparedness, and essential services. You can also find information about public transit, discounted taxis, volunteer drivers, and carpooling solutions. So visit us online at townoffairfax.org or search Age Friendly Fairfax to learn more. Share this resource with your community and your family. Together, we will ensure that aging in Fairfax is graceful, safe, and full of vitality.
Just want to thank folks and let folks know that our 90-plus celebration is this Saturday. And what we do is we bring gift bags to folks who want to participate. And so we look forward to that. And thank you, Anne. Thank you, Josiah. Thanks to all the members of Age Friendly. With that, I'll turn it back to our mayor.
Congratulations. Thank you for the wonderful presentation. Tonight, we are also celebrating the 20th anniversary of the Open Space Committee. I'd like to invite Councilmember Cutrano and Mayor Kohler to lead this presentation.
Why don't we let Councilmember Cutrano, who's the liaison? Would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure, might be happy to. Thank you. This is the proclamation for the Town of Fairfax celebrating the Fairfax Open Space Committee's 20th anniversary. Whereas the Fairfax Open Space Committee, or FOSC, was established in 2004 with the mission to preserve the visual and environmental values of the Fairfax community by acquiring and protecting undeveloped land. And whereas the Fairfax Open Space Committee has over the past 20 years safeguarded significant open spaces, providing sanctuary for indigenous flora and fauna, and ensuring that future generations can enjoy the natural beauty of Fairfax. And whereas the Fairfax Open Space Committee is an advisory body to the Town Council, assessing open space opportunities and more, providing input on certain long-range planning matters. And whereas the Fairfax Open Space Committee has played a pivotal role in fostering a strong community of dedicated volunteers, donors, and supporters who have contributed to the success of its conservation efforts, including the recent acquisition of the 100-acre Wall property. And whereas the committee has collaborated and been inspired by our community neighbors, the San Anselmo Open Space Committee, who has been in business, quotes, business, more than 40 years, and has worked in close partnership with local county, regional, and state entities, including the Marin Open Space Trust, the Marin County Open Space District, the Marin County Board of Supervisors, the State Coastal Conservancy, and the Town Council, and the Town of Fairfax overall. And whereas FOSC has created a legacy of environmental stewardship, notably through projects like the Redwood Preserve, Creekside Preserve, Jolly Hill Open Space, and Sky Ranch. In 2015, 16 acres of open space in Fairfax and San Anselmo, providing valuable green spaces and fostering community pride in land conservation. And whereas this year, the pinnacle of many successes of the Fairfax Open Space Committee was attained working with the Town Council, Marin Open Space Trust, and many other trusted partners. On September 30th, 2024, the Town of Fairfax acquired the 100-acre Wall property, the jewel of Fairfax, for the protection, restoration, and enhancement of natural resources, wildlife habitat, open space, California Native American tribal cultural resources, and compatible public access. Fairfax Open Space Committee held fundraisers and worked hard to foster community support. And whereas the contributions of current and former Fairfax Open Space Committee members, including its leadership and all its members, as well as the many community youth who have been involved, have ensured that the committee's vision and mission continues to thrive. And whereas in recognition of the 20th anniversary, we honor the Fairfax Open Space Committee for its two decades of dedication to protecting open spaces for the benefit of the entire Fairfax community and beyond. Now therefore be it hereby proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax do hereby proclaim the year 2024 as the 20th anniversary of the Fairfax Open Space Committee. And with our sincere appreciation for Fairfax Open Space Committee members, present and past, we urge all residents to recognize and celebrate the committee's accomplishments and continued Herculean efforts to preserve and protect open spaces, and thus protecting the beauty, the biodiversity, and natural resources of Fairfax and beyond. Okay, Anne, I believe we have the Chair of the Open Space Committee here, and we have this proclamation signed by Mayor Kohler to be presented to Chair Pascal Barron right now, if you'd like to come up.
And I want to ask Josiah not to leave. Unfortunately, with all the hubbub, I forgot to present the proclamation to Joseph Buneagle for Age Friendly. I'll come down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Open Space Committee. We appreciate your support in preserving our town. Lastly, we'll recognize this year's Citizen of the Year. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Blash and Mayor Kohler to lead this.
Thank you. First, I want to mention, before I read the proclamation, our honoree is not here tonight. We've got a picture of her. So the Town of Fairfax proclamation in honor of Sandy Adler-Killen, our 2024 Citizen of the Year. And I want to mention that when you read the, when you hear the proclamation, you'll know that Sandy has gone to war-torn countries, countries with disasters aiding mothers and babies and others. And she was deployed to Gaza again a couple of weeks ago for five weeks. So she won't be here tonight, but we'll have her come back briefly in December to accept a framed proclamation. So I'll start off and I'll finish. I'll let Vice Mayor Blash read the other half. But I do need glasses, and thank you, Erin. Erin is here accepting or just being here showing Sandy's picture. Okay, excellent. Whereas Sandy Adler-Killen, a dedicated resident of Fairfax, has selflessly and courageously devoted her life to serving others both locally and globally as a pediatric emergency room nurse and lactation consultant. Whereas Ms. Adler-Killen has demonstrated exceptional bravery and compassion by working in disaster zones around the world, including Gaza, Syria, Turkey, Mexico, Puerto Rico, Panama, and other locations, providing critical medical care to individuals facing unimaginable circumstances due to natural disasters, conflict, and humanitarian crises. And whereas Sandy's recent humanitarian work in Gaza, where she served with the Palestine Red Crescent Society, helping injured and distressed individuals with minimal medical supplies amidst active conflict, reflects her extraordinary commitment to alleviating suffering and offering hope in the most challenging environments. And whereas Sandy's impact extends far beyond the Fairfax community as her tireless efforts in global humanitarian missions have saved countless lives and provided solace to those in need, regardless of politics or nationality, embodying the highest ideals of compassion and service. And whereas Ms. Adler-Killen has spent considerable time and energy participating in humanitarian missions across the globe, including her work in response to the 2023 earthquake in Turkey and Syria, where she treated victims of one of the most devastating natural disasters in recent history. And whereas Sandy's ongoing commitment to serving marginalized and underserved populations, as evidenced by her work as a lactation consultant in refugee camps in war-torn areas, highlights her dedication to improving the lives of women, children, and families in some of the world's most desperate circumstances. And whereas Ms. Adler-Killen's humanitarian work and personal sacrifice have brought great honor to the Town of Fairfax, inspiring residents to uphold the values of empathy, community service, and global responsibility.
And whereas despite the extraordinary nature of her work and the inherent risks she faces in these dangerous environments, Sandy remains humble, compassionate, and steadfast in her mission to help others, a true reflection of the spirit of Fairfax. And whereas Sandy cannot attend tonight, as she left on October 5th to return to Gaza for five weeks to continue her work during the humanitarian crisis in this active war zone. Whereas Sandy has made our town and our world better in numerous ways, the Town of Fairfax is truly a better place because of Sandy Adler-Killen. And now therefore be it hereby proclaimed that the Town of Fairfax, the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax hereby recognizes and honors Sandra Adler-Killen as the 2024 Citizen of the Year recipient for her outstanding contributions to humanity, her unwavering commitment to serving those in need, and her embodiment of the highest standards of compassion, courage, and selflessness. Be it further proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax extends its deepest gratitude to Sandy Adler-Killen for her service and sacrifices, and acknowledges the immeasurable impact she has made both within our community and around the world. And be it further proclaimed that October 16th, 2024, is Sandy Adler-Killen Day in the Town of Fairfax. We are truly fortunate to have Sandy in our midst.
So Erin, you need to push the button and speak close to the mic.
Okay, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
So Sandy sent me this last week to share with you all. I'm accepting this award on behalf of all the innocent Palestinian people that have been suffering, killed, and injured, and are suffering since October 7th. And that the innocent people, and especially the mothers and children that are affected by this conflict. I am accepting on behalf of my Palestinian colleagues, the incredible doctors and nurses who are showing up every single day with the utmost capability and warmth and grace and compassion and love in their hearts, even though their homes have been destroyed, their livelihoods destroyed. Uh oh, technological issues. Here we go. And having lost family members and living in tents and in horrific conditions, and yet here they are, beyond the strength that they show and their perseverance is something that I can't imagine any human being being able to deal with. And I see them absolutely as my heroes. This honor is really an honor for them. That's really the main thing I want to say. To keep all those, both the hostages and the people that were killed and injured on October 7th in Israel, and then of course, what's transpiring now in Gaza. Keep them in your hearts, and all we can do is continue to advocate for peace, wish for peace, and an immediate ceasefire. Always leading with love and compassion, and focus on our commonalities, our common bonds, and our common humanity.
Thank you very much, Erin. Thanks for coming down. I just want to mention that not yet. When I first spoke to Sandy about the possibility, she said, "I haven't done anything for Fairfax." And I just said, "You've done things for our world, and you brought honor to our town for all this." So it's very deserved. And now Felix is going to take over, and we will take comment on all the presentations. Reminder, folks, it's two minutes total. So not on each one, two minutes. So Felix, take it away.
Congratulations again to Sandy Adler-Killen. We are now moving to open time for public expression.
No, we're now taking public comment on the presentations. I'm sorry, the script isn't right. Okay.
My script lied to me.
Okay, this, anyway. So just folks, if there's any comments on on the presentations, unfortunately, our script isn't totally right, so we had to do a little correction. Jody.
That was beautiful. So just briefly, I want to thank on behalf on behalf of all of us.
Okay, folks, please leave the room if you're going to talk. And this is not open time. This is just on the presentations. Okay, go ahead, Jody. Sorry for interrupting. Thank you.
Just on behalf of everyone that Age Friendly Fairfax has impacted over the last 10 years, I want to thank Mayor Weinsdorf, David Weinsdorf in the very beginning getting the whole thing rolling, Mayor Kohler, all the mayors, all the council members who in 10 years have really supported all the hard work that we've done, that we hope have made, has made a big difference in the Town of Fairfax. We appreciate the community very much. The staff through the years, again, has been really wonderful and supportive. And in particular, I want to mention Anne Manis, because she has been there as rock solid from the very beginning, holding everything together with us and making all of this happen. So I just want to finish with our logo, Aging in Fairfax. Everybody's doing it. Thank you.
So again, this is just on the presentations, two minutes total. Thank you.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. Congratulations, Acting Mayor Schuldner. And congratulations to the new officers and cadet, and everybody who received an award this evening. I wish to make a note, a point of order that seems very inconsistent relating to selective enforcement of town policies that we just witnessed. The town's decorum policy that Mayor Kohler has chastised people or and threatened them with misdemeanors, and threatened them to be expelled, and has with misdemeanors, and threatened them to be expelled, and has cleared the room for before prohibits, or did at least prohibit, clapping. So I'm wondering whether that has been suspended for the rest of the evening, or why, despite all of us enjoying clapping? I haven't finished my two minutes, please. It's a violation of the Brown Act to cut me off. I'm wondering if you can make it clear why, in certain circumstances, we're able to clap and expressed our applause, but other, when you don't approve, you selectively don't approve, we can't clap, and you threaten people. Thank you.
As the presiding mayor, I would like to answer your question and just say that I would like people to clap for all items on tonight's topics. Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
To our acting mayor, you bring forth more wisdom than we generally see at this council. Thank you. Okay. What I'd like to say is, I do support everything that Todd said, and I'm grateful that he said it. But I'm actually up here to point out that how nice our community is, that we do acknowledge our seniors and the difficulties of aging, and we make accommodations for them. But if you look at the original ordinance 870-871, the initial rent control and just cause, that will force our seniors to be unable to live in place. It puts restrictions in their abilities to have somebody come in their house to help them should they break a hip, or to have somebody come in their house to help offset the increasing taxes and utilities and rent the room out. So I think these things should really be considered when we make these broad statements, because the people that are really going to be hurt the most, if Measure I does not pass, will be our single-family residences and our seniors who would like to age in place. Thank you.
I just want to caution, folks, political campaigning cannot happen where we're using town resources, so if you have campaign statements to make about various measures or folks like that, please take that outside. Larry Bragman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to commend you for honoring and recognizing Sandy Adler-Killen. It is incredibly important to recognize her courage, not only in providing assistance under the most dire circumstances, but bearing witness to a very censored conflict. Sandy was very modest in describing her work, but the circumstances that we know that she's enduring are incredible, and she's really taking her own life in her own hands to provide the assistance and bearing witness to what's happening. And I think of longtime Fairfax resident David Glick, who just passed away a couple weeks ago, who spent many, many years, as a Jewish person, as am I, bearing witness and dissenting from the policies of the Israeli government. We object to the ethno-nationalist policies of the Israeli government, just like we object to the ethno-nationalist policies that are being spread in our own country. So I think it takes some courage to put Sandy's honor, her resolution on your agenda, and I want to appreciate and thank you for recognizing her. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
If there are no more speakers on the presentation, our mayor will lead us into open time. Did you have a comment on the presentations only?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I support Todd Greenberg's comments, and I support Michael Max's comments, and I want to just point out respectfully that you've been politicking all evening. Thank you.
We are now moving to open time for public expression.
Sorry, Mayor, we have two speakers on Zoom.
Oh.
Okay.
The first speaker is, one speaker, Kristin Omly. Kristin, you are unmuted.
Thank you. This is Kristin. I want to acknowledge Ageism Awareness Day on October 9th this year, and also the great work of Age Friendly Fairfax over the past 10 years. Twenty-eight percent of the population in Fairfax is 60 and older. This is almost a third of our population in Fairfax, and that number is growing rapidly. By 2035, the number of people over 60 will outnumber those under 18 for the first time in the United States. The World Health Organization defines ageism as the stereotypes how we think, prejudice how we feel, and discrimination how we act. Ageism can be directed toward ourselves and others. Aging is not something to be ashamed of or something that needs to be cured. Instead, there are many benefits to aging. It's a natural process that hopefully everyone at this meeting can experience. Older people are very diverse, just as people of all ages are. Instead of making assumptions about people because of their age or discriminating against them, get to know people of different ages. Learn more about their realities and who they are as people, including their successes and challenges. You'll find that they're just like you. The Age Friendly Fairfax Group is a terrific group who does wonderful things. They're always looking for people of all ages who want to get engaged at any time. My name is Kristin Omly, and I'm the Commissioner representing Fairfax and the Marin County Commission on Aging, and we are another group that is interested in your ideas and engagement. Feel free to contact me via the Town Clerk and read more about Age Friendly Fairfax and the Town of Fairfax newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more on Zoom? Okay.
That was the last speaker.
All right. So we will now move on. We are now moving to open time for public expression, finally. This is a time for community members to speak on items not on tonight's agenda. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I have a gavel, and I will use it. We will hear 15 minutes in the room and then move to Zoom. If you are joining us on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. Deputy Clerk, will you please bring up the two-minute timer? It looks like it's on the board, so we can get started.
Just before you speak, I just want to mention, it's 7:30, so at 7:45, we will move to Zoom. Thank you.
So my name is Ryder, and I just want to read you a letter.
Please turn on the mic for the young gentleman. They need to be a little closer, and it needs to be read. I don't think it's on. Oh, it's low? Okay.
I have lived in Fairfax since I was two years old. I have, and what happened was, when I was playing baseball, I was doing pretty good, and then the homeless people, one of them came up, and he was yelling at us. So he was just like, "I'm coming in there." And my coach was like, "Well, there's kids in there." And they're being really rude and throwing trash at us. And he was trying to come in, while all the parents were trying to push him out. And I'm just here to say that I hope that maybe they could get moved to a home where they're not, maybe like not near a baseball field, so they can not interrupt the game. So, um, so the police came and like tried to take or like try and help with the situation, but he tried to run away from the police and tried to climb up the fence, and it was really scary. So the coach was like, "Come on, should we leave?" And then they were like, "No, we got it." And then like the more police came and took him away. So I was just here to say that I hope that something could change.
Now, we only have 15 minutes. I would like to keep moving on to the next speaker. Please keep the clapping a little bit short. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Vincent. I live in Fairfax. I've played at Perry Park my whole life, and I don't feel safe there anymore. I wish you could help the people in the park find other, another place to live. I feel bad for them and wish we could all enjoy that space. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kip Shaw. Barbara, I was the last caller on April 3rd, the last Zoom caller. I had waited here and I had to leave, and I think I told you guys that. Sorry, Kristal. I just showed up today. I didn't even know this was happening tonight. A lot of our community members got ahold of me, friends of mine, and let me know what was happening. My son is personal friends with Ryder, and he was one of the children that was playing baseball when that incident happened, that I told you guys about, where the guy was asking my kids for their phone number. It was actually our 15-year-old. He's on his way here, but, oh, you are? Oh, you can't hear me? Sorry.
You need to speak close to the mic, sorry.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous, like, it's hot in here. Anyways, I just wanted to come forward, because, you know, when we had that meeting, a lot of us spoke, and I'll be honest, I was a little disheartened, because I thought, you know, we're coming forward as parents, and, you know, I think I told you guys, I was homeless for a while when I got out of the military, and I understand, I have a real soft place in my heart for people going through stuff, and, because I've gone through it and climbed out of it myself. And when I found out about all this, and I found out that Ryder was the one that this happened to, I have another son named Ryder, I have four boys and two girls, and this is Kristal. And so basically, when I read his letter, it broke my heart, because I didn't even know that had happened, because I've been working a lot, and my kids aren't doing fall ball, we're going back in the spring. And I just wanted to come up, because you said something right after my speaking, it went over here and then it came back, and you seemed very compassionate, you were like, "If this happens, call the police." I was the guy that waited three days to call, you know, and I learned from that. But you had said that it is illegal to harass, you know, so call the police, and you said, "We don't want our children being harassed." And it was a direct comment to that, so I just wanted to appeal.
Very much, your time's up, sir. We'll go to the next speaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing, I hope you don't mind, but I'm just going to let you know when you have 15 seconds left, just so it's a little bit smoother. Does that work? No, for the next speakers. Thank you.
My name is Sean Fitzgerald, Town Council. I'm not going to stand here today and shame you for your willful negligence on addressing the mentally ill, fentanyl and meth users in Perry Park. I'm not going to call out the council members and staff who intentionally misled me and delayed me on getting an encampment item on today's agenda. And I'm not going to address the fact that dozens of citizens have documented efforts for three years, pleading with you to act on the dangers, illegal activities, the behavior, the drugs, the disturbances from the campers. I'm not going to go into depth about the outside voice you're listening to named Jason Saris, who after abandoning his family and kids for 10 years while taking meth, throwing away his job, and turning to a life of crime, eventually squatting in Nevada until he won a free housing voucher, is now advocating to this council to adopt his philosophy of letting people squat until freedom. And I don't have time to share the criminal rap sheet of the meth addict that's currently sleeping along the park fence, and the men screaming at our children playing baseball when they are just trying to have a good time. Really, today I have time to say one thing: winter is coming.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Lynette Shaw, and I brought some of my staff and supporters with me. Mayor Kohler, honorable city council members, and fellow citizens in Fairfax, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I represent the CBC Marin Alliance, thousands of patients, customers, and the paid employees. The Marin Alliance is the single oldest legal dispensary in the United States. It will be shut down without your help and cooperation due to our landlord's decision to evict all of the tenants in our school street premises by January 1st, 2025. As many of you know, we have served the community in one form or another for decades, receiving a permit for a medical dispensary before even the state rules were in place. This forward-thinking innovation by Fairfax council members led the nation. Hundreds of thousands of others have followed our town's lead, and approval of medical and adult-use cannabis is now one of the only reliable bipartisan issues. We have been notified by our landlord that we need to relocate our historical and vital local business because of the planned sale and development of School Street Plaza. Under current Fairfax codes, relocating our permit is a complex and time-consuming process that could do lasting and irreversible damage to our business and the patients we serve. We ask your help to avert this potential medical crisis and prevent an extended delay by allowing us to relocate our permit through your timely action, similar to how you enabled us to continue our operation at School Street Plaza many years ago. I will be introducing Dr. C.R. Nylund, a top Marin County physician specializing in hospice and palliative care, about how we provide an essential medical service to community members in need.
15 seconds left.
Not only do we provide this vital service, the dispensary also draws thousands of shoppers to our local businesses to Fairfax each year. I've been a citizen of Fairfax for decades, and I'm prepared to move forward immediately with another location here.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Nylund.
Members of the Fairfax Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Dr. Christopher Neeland. I am a palliative care physician who works with patients who are facing serious life-limiting illnesses, including cancer, Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, and HIV. I'm here to strongly support the request from Marin Alliance to be given accommodation to find a new location. This dispensary provides an essential service to patients who rely on medical cannabis to manage symptoms like severe pain, nausea, anxiety, symptoms that can significantly impact your quality of life. And as the only brick-and-mortar dispensary in all of Marin County, Marin Alliance is truly irreplaceable. Its closure would leave countless vulnerable patients without safe and local access to treatment they need. For many, traveling distances is not a feasible option. Beyond the products it provides, the staff at this dispensary offer compassionate and expert guidance, helping reduce the stigma surrounding medical cannabis use. Their support is invaluable for patients who may otherwise struggle to navigate their treatment options. In my role as a palliative care provider, the majority of my patients are over 65. The Marin Alliance is an important part of ensuring our town is providing essential services and fulfilling its mission as an age-friendly community. Without the dispensary, our community's sickest and most vulnerable patients will lose a lifeline. I respectfully urge this council to grant the authorization for the business to relocate so these patients can continue to access the care that they depend on. Felix, in your statement, you said specifically that you wanted to protect local businesses. I truly hope the rest of the council shares this sentiment, because this is a perfect opportunity to show your support to a local business who's served the town of Fairfax and the county of Marin for the past 27 years. Thank you very much for your consideration. Do any of you have any questions?
We don't respond to, we're not interacting at this point. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Deborah Sue Preck. Mayor Kohler, honorable city council members, and the fellow citizens of Fairfax, thank you for the opportunity to address you, and I represent CBC, the Marin Alliance as well. It's thousands of patients and customers and paid employees. Lynette has been a citizen of Fairfax for decades and is prepared to move forward immediately with another location. We've identified potential properties here in Fairfax, but we are unable to reopen in a timely fashion and secure to do so, to secure funding to do so, without your help and your cooperation. Thank you. We met, we met with the town staff and your attorney to discuss this situation, and we would like to work with the council to consider some minor technical adjustments. and we would like to work with the council to consider some minor technical adjustments to our permit that will enable us to reopen in a new location. Fairfax led the county as a pioneer dispensary license as she has, you know, for 1998. Lynette has spent 19 years in federal civil court fighting the right to sell cannabis legally. We prevailed and therefore protect every license holder in the nation with Lynette Shaw's decision. We ask the city council town and the town council to demonstrate compassion and courage once again. I thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, council. What I'd like to bring to your attention is what our brave young speaker first came up here to say. The audience behind us is looking forward for you to finally do some direction. You have shorted them, you have slighted them, and you certainly have not done your required responsibilities to represent the voice of the majority or the minority. They're here because you refuse to allow a citizen's position, excuse me, petition, to have this on the agenda. You were not interested enough in their interest. I think the council has the discretion to allow the people in the room to speak, should you want. You have a community that's taken the time, including a young family with children, to come here. So if you can please do your job and nobody's asking to kick the campers out. They're asking for the council to find the direction and find a better home for them that is not right where our children recreate. A parent's first job is protect their children. The community's job is to protect all the children. And I would certainly think the council would take that same directive. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Frank Agger from the Cascades. Uh, I was sitting up there when we approved Marin Alliance's first permits back in the 1990s. I'm gonna speak a bit about, about the parks. Chapter 12.36 Regulation for Parks, Playgrounds, Public Tennis Courts and Central Ball Field. Section 12.36.020, nighttime use, permission of town clerk or designee required. It is unlawful for any person except town employees to, on duty, to go into, walk upon, be in or use town parks, playgrounds, public tennis courts and central ball field between the hours of sunset and sunrise each day without permission issued by the town clerk or designee as provided in section 12.36.030. There are two posted signs as you enter into Perry Park. One, one says no, no nighttime use and the other says no smoking. So I, I'm wondering if, has the town clerk issued permits, uh, for the occupants of the urban encampments? Question number one. Fairfax bans smoking in town parks to protect our children from secondhand smoke. The safety of our children and grandchildren playing in our parks should be a top priority. And, and I'm wondering who decides what, what town laws the town council is gonna have enforced? Thank you very much.
All right, we are going to move to Zoom now, unfortunately. So we have run out of time for the.
So we do 15 minutes in the room and 15 minutes on Zoom. Michael, Michael, when you're sitting up, 15 minutes in the room, 15 minutes on Zoom, if there are uh, not enough people on Zoom, we will continue.
Regarding Zoom.
We're going to Zoom now.
I know, but regarding Zoom, you guys can show people that there are people on Zoom, you can see their faces. No, you can see their faces, but you don't want to do this because you, you, it's too much work.
Mallory, thank you. Okay, let's go to Zoom.
Don't say thank you. You're not thanking me.
Let's go to Zoom, please, Madam Kohler.
The first speaker is Lynn, followed by Jody. Lynn, you are unmuted.
Hi, I, I would like an explanation about renaming the wall property took priority, priority over the unhoused.
That's not, so Lynn, excuse me, that is not an open time matter. This is an item on the agenda. So if you have something that's not on the agenda, please go ahead. Otherwise, uh, that item will be coming up soon.
So we can speak again after you talk about the wall property?
If you, the wall property is an agenda item, so you, that's not an open time issue.
So we can't discuss that?
Not right now, but when the agenda item comes up, you can call in for that. Thank you, Lynn.
The next speaker is Jody, followed by Deborah Benson. Jody, you are unmuted.
Uh, good evening again, mayor and council members. Um, Jody on Cascade Drive. I just want to speak briefly about two themes tonight, ageism awareness and climate change. On ageism, I, I read a great New York Times article recently about the face of the 90-year-old legendary actress Maggie Smith, who died recently, but who had done a photo shoot for an old European luxury brand about a year ago. The article reflected on the beauty of her truly old face. It went on to say that our cultural obsession with youth and newness encourages us to overvalue one part of the cycle of life, the beginning, and to ignore or turn away from the latter part of it, old age and death. The article goes on to say, this is a kind of macro-level ageism, a refusal to consider that our planet has a lifespan, lifespan too, that it doesn't exist in an internal, eternal, invincible youth and that we're actually accelerating its demise, and ours, I would add. So that said, let me just mention some climate change events that are coming up for those of us who are inspired to try to turn around the climate crisis. I left flyers for three different events in the back, but this Friday, the Fairfax Climate Action Committee, along with seven other environmental organizations in Marin, are sponsoring the screening of the film Purple Mountains at 7 o'clock in the Women's Club. The focus of the film is the love of outdoors and in particular, snow and winters and how those of us who love nature can work across diverse political backgrounds to protect our valuable natural resources. So please come for free, have some popcorn or cookies with us and enjoy the show. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
The next speaker is Deb. Deb, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Took me a while to see the unmute button. Deborah Benson Cascades, um, I'm in full support of whatever it takes to, um, to make it, uh, easy and, and, uh, quick for Marin Alliance to relocate. Um, also, I am, as others are concerned about the, uh, the unhoused housing themselves in our park right next to the kids' ball field. Um, I am wondering, um, if, uh, if a group of, uh, say 30 residents decided to have a camp in at Perry Park, would that be allowed, uh, for how long? Um, could we build fires? Could we smoke? Could we, you know, drink alcohol? Could we take drugs? Um, there are other communities, uh, especially after, uh, Newsom's order to clear encampments who are doing so and, and, um, offering people shelter. Uh, if people are refusing shelter, um, they're not being allowed to stay. I'm wondering why this council's not following the governor's edict and, um, why these, these people are being allowed to break our laws. Uh, where does that end? Who's allowed? Why are they being allowed? And if, uh, someone else runs a stop sign, we get a ticket. Um, I don't get it. I don't understand. I think the council isn't doing their job. Uh, I have empathy for people who don't have a house to live in, but we do have shelter available. And, um, I think it's a grand imposition on our community.
You have 15 seconds left.
Yeah, thank you, to, uh, allow defecation in our, in our, in our parks, in our streams, uh, cars to come on to, uh, the park property to unload things, garbage to accumulate. And thank you, thank you.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
So we have 10 more minutes and then, uh, whatever's not finished will go to the end of the agenda.
Thank you. That we can, uh, you can video this. This can be videoed so we, we can see people who are talking. Um, but I was told that the council, it was too much work. I think you need to do that work. The other thing is I was at the, uh, the celebration for the sale. I don't know if that's part of this, but I'm not talking about the wall property, but I am talking about, uh, Fairfax recycling and buying probably 100 plastic, uh, champagne glasses, two pieces, and then just recycling them. Now, we know recycling is not really helpful anymore. Okay, and there's no reason, there's no reason for us to buy plastic champagne glasses for like a ho- a toast to very few people now. And I really want you guys to get it together to deal with some really good ecological, uh, conservation for our town because what we're doing here really sucks.
Next speaker.
Deborah London residence. I own the coffee roastery here in Fairfax. I, um, people of Fairfax have important legitimate concerns that are consistently being ignored while this town council exercises its personal agendas. As if extreme rent control and paralyzing just cause eviction ordinances weren't enough proof of Fairfax residents' profound discontent. Now have you a brand-new batch of Fairfax residents up in arms about the homeless situation we now have in town, thanks to your personal limitations? The roastery battles this situation every day at great effort cost and under disgusting circumstances. Use your imagination. Two quick stories. Several years ago, on a dark and stormy night, true story, three kids, husband not home, went to my bedroom to take a bath. Men's black wet socks next to the bathtub. I was stunned momentarily, turned around, opened my closet door. What do you think was in there? A strange adult man hiding in my closet. This is a true story. I screamed like an insane banshee. He slid cowering down to the ground with his arms over his head. The cops came, took him away. He had his food in our refrigerator. He had his backpack in our laundry room. He had his bicycle in our basement. And he, his body was in my closet. Luckily, he wasn't violent, just very mentally disturbed. Otherwise, I might not be standing here today. Another time, disturbed man in the roastery gave him 20 minutes to, to finish his coffee and leave and never come back. He flew off the handle. Cops came. This time, he was a convict that had just been released from San Quentin State Penitentiary. Last week, crazy guy in the roastery kicking our chairs, throwing furniture, screaming at people, calling him nigger and faggot. Cops removed him. Week before, an insane woman wielding a knife at Naves and she moved her episode over to the coffee roastery bathroom. Uh, we could write a book. Kelly and I are done. We are systematically and permanently banning these people from being anywhere near the roastery inside our, inside our roastery. You have no idea who, who you have living in our children's sacred space. What's it gonna take? Well, I have more. Vote yes. Vote the incumbent out. Vote Edgar. Vote, vote Darren Galley. Vote yes.
Remind folks, you may have very, uh, strong opinions. We cannot use town resources for campaign announcements or things on the measures. Please defer from that and go outside if you're going to do that. Deb, thank you.
Please speak.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Godwin. I live at the top of Manor Hill, literally at the top of Manor Hill. Uh, the property line for my property, Tammerancho, the county and the town are one and the same. So I'm as far up the hill as you can possibly go. What I came to do tonight was to listen to all of the people who are talking about the terrible problems that we're having and I've decided to come up with a solution. The fact is, we've got a good solution here in Fairfax, readily available. It's already built. It's there. We have two Girl Scout camps at the base of White's Hill. Both of them have, um, a whole series of different kinds of sleeping arrangements, but the one I want to talk about are the little cabins that they have. As Sean remarked, winter is coming and eventually we're going to have heavy rains or at least traditionally we've had heavy rains. And I don't think leaving the homeless out in the rain is a good idea either. In fact, I don't think having them here is a good idea. But it would be possible to perhaps negotiate with the Girl Scout Council of Northern California and speak with them about the possibility of renting perhaps five or six of these, uh, small cabins so that these people did have a place to go where there were four walls and a roof. It's not luxury, but it's dry. And I think that would be a really good thing to do. The other thing is that Fairfax, funny funky little Fairfax, is little. We don't have the ability to find a huge piece of flat land, buy the land, develop it, put in the infrastructure in order to provide housing for the homeless. There are 97 decommissioned military bases in the Bay Area. This is a Bay Area problem. It's a regional problem. It's a statewide problem. If we do it right.
You have 10 seconds.
If we do it right, we can set a model for the entire nation. Please, since I can't finish here, come talk to me. Thank you.
We have time for two more.
Hi, I'm Nora Elder.
And I'm Yella Seligman. We're freshmen at Archie Williams and we're here tonight to share students' perspective on why it's important that we invest in our buildings.
Some people say that we should put money into education and not buildings, but I want to tell you what it's like for me in my Spanish class, which is my last class of the day. With more than 30 students stuffed into my classroom, poor ventilation and no AC, it is an everyday struggle to focus on my learning because of the heat. A few weeks ago, when the temperature skyrocketed, it was nearly unbearable for students in class and teachers to focus and excel during school hours. This was because the classrooms were scorching and stuffy because of the high temperature outside. With rising temperatures in Marin, this is only going to get worse. We need to upgrade our heating and cooling systems because this will make a tremendous difference in going to school for students and teachers.
We are both student athletes. We just came from our field hockey game and joining a sports team as freshmen was a very important thing for us to try something new and fun. Yet we don't have anywhere to change before games and practices or anywhere to store all of our equipment. The bathrooms are packed with other student athletes trying to quickly change before rushing to practice or games. This system is not efficient at all. With three stalls and a rush of students trying to get ready, funding will build out the Archie Williams Field House so that multiple teams can have spaces to change, shower and hold team meetings. A lot of our friends are student athletes as well and having a field house that is safe, clean and functional make a big difference in our overall experience of not only sports, but also high school.
We ask the community to consider investing in our school and other schools because having a safe and clean space to learn is important and crucial for students' high school experience. And our generation is the next, our generation is the future of this district and community, so it is crucial that we have a memorable, safe and clean high school experience.
All right, this will be our last speaker.
Hi.
No, at, at half an hour, we move to the end of the agenda. Hey, all right, quiet down now. All right, Todd, go ahead. No. No, go ahead, Todd.
Todd, would you allow someone who came here who's a different, a person that doesn't usually speak to maybe speak in your place since I don't think I've seen this person before? Maybe she would appreciate a little time.
I, I think if you really cared, if you really cared, you'd let us all speak rather than trying to stifle our voices.
Okay, so this is time for you to speak in two minutes. Thank you. Please speak.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. This is just another example of how this town council has disregarded our community. There's been bad decision-making and overspending and malfeasance. Mayor Kohler is in print in the Marin Eye Journal saying she wants to, once she wants to build two, five or six-story tall buildings in Fairfax. Do we want that? I don't think so. Do we want that? I don't think so. You're disregarding the whole community and you've been doing it. Not only that, for the past four years, you've been spending more money than the town's brought in. The town's revenues are up 11% during that time, but the spending is up 34%. And this year, despite what you've told me, which is inaccurate, what you've stated publicly on the record, you said, we do not have a budget deficit. Well, guess what? Here we are again in a new year and the budget deficit, the budgeted deficit is $1,500,000 something thousand. Maybe it's more than that. $537,000. We're taking in $13,195 million, $13 million, $195,000, pardon me. And you're budgeted to spend $14,700 and something. I don't get it. You're drawing down our reserves. You want to tax us more. You want to borrow another million and a half dollars. You guys don't know how to run a town. You don't deserve to be in office. You don't care about the kids. You don't care about the kids. You don't deserve our vote and none of us are voting for you.
So. Let, so let one speaker and that's it. And I want to just say one thing. Consider that you are saying libelous statements. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. And so I've started emailing the council about three years ago about the homeless situation. I want you to take a look at my beautiful blonde children here and my friends' children. This is just a sampling. There's many listening on Zoom right now. Very, very many parents very concerned about the homeless situation. Lack of empathy is not true. Lack of compassion is not true. We care. We care about homeless people. We care about the, you know, epidemic in the country, in the world. What we care about is our children's safety. My beautiful little girl has had two men expose themselves in front of her. My son has seen men taking drugs on the pavilion steps on his way out from Futsal. I emailed about this. The only person who's ever responded to me was Stephanie. One time, Liesl responded, but it was just a general response. Now we have 17 homeless people living in that encampment who do not want to leave. Last night, one of them was messed up at an event, spoke to me directly and told me, I don't want to leave. I don't have to leave. I love living here. I'm concerned about the deer and getting stuck on the field. So those are the people that are living up there. Same woman tried to kill herself in the Naves bathroom, tried to rip the pipes out of the wall and then ran to the arcade steps and tried to stab somebody. She was arrested. You can, you are, I'm sure you're already aware of it. Another man on Saturday at the Biketoberfest had a needle stuck in his leg and some families walked by and got to see that. These are the type of people that are living in that encampment. They do not want help. They do not want support. Some of them have gotten help and Tom, I think his name is, he's gotten help, looks really cleaned up, came back here. Must have used something pissed all over himself and is drunk in town. So whatever's happening is not working. I surely hope that you're taking steps now that some of the roadblocks are out of the way from the court decisions that you actually are doing something behind scenes. Please, please do it. I am just a small representation of all of the parents who feel the same way. It's not a lack of empathy, not a lack of compassion. Do your job and find a solution for this problem in Fairfax.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We will now be taking a five minute break.
We're going to go ahead and get started. Yeah, but before we get started, I want to just say something. For those of you talking in the room, I'd appreciate it if you took it outside. Just one thing. You know, people saying the N word here is completely inappropriate. And while you may be repeating something that you heard, that's really inappropriate. And also saying an F word is really inappropriate. I realize there's a lot of anxiety and stress, but we don't do that here. So with that, our mayor for the day is going to take over with the regular agenda.
All right, we will move on to the regular agenda items. The first item is adopting a resolution to amend the annual salary schedule for fiscal year 2425. I'd like to invite town manager Heather Abrams to provide more information.
Thank you, mayor and council members. This is a routine item, but it is recommended by CalPERS to have it on the regular agenda. So you see in your packet, the full salary schedule. We need to adopt this separately in order to comply with CalPERS regulations. And we are doing this at this time because we have now completed all of the employee negotiations with SEIU, POA, the Unrepresented Management Group, as well as the police chief. And this salary schedule that you see in your packet reflects the COLA adjustments for all of those groups. And I also want to bring to your attention that we moved the positions which are unfilled or planned to be unfilled to the bottom and grade them out so that it was more clear that these are unfilled positions. They are not spending items. And that includes the Marketing and Communications Specialist, which was previously approved by the council. And then when Camille moved on, we closed that position. And we did not, we're not planning to refill it at this time. So just wanted to make that clear and I'll open up to any questions you may have.
No. Are there any questions that the council has of staff on this side on?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Kachana.
Thanks for your clarification about the marketing and the communications specialist. I believe even when Camille was here, it was like a 50% time job or something like that, but and split with maybe Parks and Rec or something like that. But the question I have is about like the building inspector. So I was interested to see that that was grayed out and that there's no plan to have that position. But is, but Mark Lockaby is kind of like the building inspector, right? But he, so is he, he's the building official and then there's a separate building inspector, I guess, job classification. Is that, and what are the differences? Because it's surprising to me, maybe to the public, to see that we don't have a building inspector.
Yeah, well, I'll start and then I may turn it over to Jeff if I, if I mess anything up. So we recently, the council approved new job descriptions for the building official, not the building official slash public works manager. That was an old position that is not filled. And we recruited for that position and we were lucky enough to convince Mark to stay when he had planned to retire and take that position. And we did do a full recruitment and interviewed other people as well. He had to, you know, submit his resume and cover letter and go through an interview process. So all of that happened and we hired Mark to continue. And then also at that time, the council approved a building inspector position. But at this time, that building official is filling the tasks of doing building inspection as well as building official duties. Did I miss anything there?
And code enforcement and a bunch of other things. But yeah.
I think the other thing to point out is the, the reason that we added that in was as a kind of a backstop approach and also have flexibility with staffing because building officials are just incredibly hard to find all throughout California. All throughout California and particularly up here north of the Bay Area. So the idea was is that if we had a problem finding a building official right away, we could hire at the building inspector level and potentially have a larger field of candidates. And then supplement that, we have to have a building official, but we could supplement that with a consultant building official. So that was kind of the, the backup plan if we, if Mark didn't stay around.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if you could clarify for the public, like every public agency, I think, has a salary schedule. It's just kind of a requirement, right?
Yes, it is a requirement and all of the CalPERS agencies, which are almost all of the municipalities, have to do it in this way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Abrams. I'd like to open this item up to public comment, but, oh, but we already covered council member questions. So if there's any public comment.
Thank you for the presentation. My first question is from the general public looking at your balanced budget. How is the public able to determine when there's an unfilled position that those funds return to the budget? And it's not just obfuscated and spent elsewhere. So in other words, if you budget a position that's not filled and your balance was budgeted, that means you allocate the funds for that position. If the position was infilled, how are those funds accommodated or allocated or identified? So general public can readily see these with the summation in case there's multiple departments or partial employments. Additionally, I really think Mark Lockaby is one of your best assets. You could not improve upon that. And the fact that he had to beg to just be paid what the opening salary is for the next person so he can keep his job, that's pathetic. He is why you guys are here with any, any sort of respect. So please consider that because those are the type of people that we need to fill our ranks. Thank you.
Go for it.
Good evening again. This is Todd Greenberg from downtown Fairfax. We are commenting on agenda item number one right now, which is adopt a resolution amending the annual salary schedule for fiscal year 2024, 2025, which is projected to have a $1.5 million deficit. Now, there's a 4% cost of living adjustment for unrepresented employee group. And there's a 5% COLA for SEIU and a 6% COLA for FPOA. Everybody's working hard. Costs are going up. There's a lot of inflation. We all need more money to be able to keep our heads afloat. But wow, you won't let somebody who has to pay all these increased costs increase their rent more than 75% of CPI without paying a $1,000 fee and doing the equivalent of a full audit before doing so. So I don't think it's right that you adopt this, even though I'm for everybody who's doing this work. Please let me make that clear. Unless you do it fairly for everybody in this town. You need to put the fair back in Fairfax. Right now, it's unfair what you are doing to this town. Thank you.
All right, I'm closing public comments. Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't see you there. Next speaker, go ahead.
You must be having fun doing this. Mark Bell, Fairfax. Yeah, I was looking at the salary schedule and yeah, 4%, 5%, 6% COLA. And really I came to the same conclusion that Todd did where you're renting or you're a housing provider. You're capped at 2.5 or 2.7. You have insurance costs. You have electricians, you have upkeep, you have taxes going up, you have all this stuff going on, inflation. Basically, you're in a loss. You're not keeping up. You're starting to drown. I mean, is that the plan of the Democratic Socialist of America? It seems like it. Maybe it's yours too. The other thing that caught my attention is we had a climate action coordinator who really didn't accomplish anything for $65,000 plus benefits, working part-time. And now you're hiring one at $100,000 plus benefits for half-time? When we have someone in town who worked at the EPA for over 20 years, who knows all the top people in all the lobbying, environmental lobbying firms and think tanks in Washington DC, who's totally connected in that world. And she offered, she tried to volunteer and she was repulsed by the Climate Action Committee. But I talked to the Climate Action Committee guy when he first came on. I said, you know, phantom power takes
You have 15 seconds.
Takes 10 to 20% of American use. You know, it's, you can do something about it. You can contact Sacramento Municipal Utility Water District, Utility District. They have something that'll help. He didn't do anything. Really? $100,000 and you want to tax us for that?
Sir, next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor. Rick Hamer, downtown Fairfax. Couple of things is I agree with Mr. McIntosh about Mark Lockaby being quite an asset for our, our community. And I do think it is a good idea to keep a building inspector pay grade in there because I just checked governmentjobs.com and it seems to be an employer's market for building inspectors right now. This is somewhat cyclic and, you know, it takes a few years before someone would be qualified or have the proper, proper experience. And, you know, I don't know how much longer Mark doesn't want to retire. A lot of mushroom hunting and other things he could be doing. The other thing that I think is missing is I did not see our housing specialist's pay grade in there. I see an associate planner. Assistant planner is in there, but I think that pay grade should be in there as well. And I think it was an omission. Thanks.
Are there any speakers on Zoom?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. I would like to now close public comment and bring the discussion back to the dais.
Can I ask a couple of questions? First question is just clarifying. So Sean Ura, who was our prior climate action coordinator, did great work, made sure we complied with SB 1383, making sure all of our compostables were actually being composted, not going to landfill, which is a new state mandate. He was paid that amount of money for his part-time position, in part because we split the role 50/50 with the town of San Anselmo. Is it my, it's my understanding, but you can probably clarify for me. The, the current pay that we have for the climate action coordinator, which is that, you know, roughly $100,000 to $116,000, that is for the full-time position. But we have that position hosted here and the town of San Anselmo pays us 50% of that position, the fully burdened cost. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. And we invoice the town of San Anselmo quarterly.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that clarification. The other thing I had a question about, it's, there seemed to be like some confusion about the salary schedule as a, as something that we can look at to guide our, our pay. And the fact that maybe someone would see this and think that we've budgeted for all of these positions in the budget and then the unfilled ones might end up being, being used for something else or something was maybe the, the thinking. And maybe that's because at the top, it says salary schedule for fiscal year 2024, 25. So maybe someone thought that meant that these were all the budgeted positions. But can you confirm or clarify that, you know, some of these are in the salary schedule in the event that we would hire for that? And then we know what the monthly pay is and the, in the pay range, both monthly and annually for that and which management unit they might be in. But that currently, all of those grayed out positions that we see beneath dispatcher, we didn't budget for those. The salary schedule is separate and distinct from the fiscal year 2425 budget and just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, thank you. That's a very clear way of explaining it. So none of the positions which are planned to be unfilled, by definition, planned to be unfilled means we did not budget for them. There's no obfuscation. There's no money. There's no obfuscation. There's no money allocated for those positions. That's what that means, being unfilled. The salary schedule needs to be adopted because we need to be able to show CalPERS this is the whole plan. And it is very typical for any town or city to have positions on the salary schedule which are planned to be unfilled because as was mentioned, you may have a need that's mid-year and you will need to be able to make decisions to fill those. But we don't fill positions without the council's consent. That all comes through the budget process. We're making those plans. And if there are changes, you would be hearing about that at a meeting.
Thank you. And one, one point to just drive it home or one clarification. So say, because we've been talking about this, you know, Mark Lockaby is now in this new building official role. A member of the public brought up still wanting to have some continuity or consistency and say we wanted to onboard a new building inspector or something to kind of learn the ropes from Mark before he decides to officially retire, hopefully some point years down the line. But nonetheless, say we decided that. We would look to this salary schedule to, to figure out the, the pay range, but we would, even if it was mid-year or next year, we would have to find that money somewhere in the budget because it's currently not in the budget, right?
Exactly. And so the typical scenario would be, and it is, it is a good idea if it fits in the budget to have that sort of succession planning throughout the organization. What we would be doing is coming to you during the budget process and, and you've seen this before in the budget hearings and in the budget workshops. I would be saying, we have this position filled. We want to fill this additional position. It's shown here in this line item for staffing, for personnel in those departments or that department where that position serves. So you would be seeing all of that. There's, it's just part of the planning process.
Awesome. Thank you. I think those are all the questions I have.
I'm just going to say thank you for clarifying. I think that I heard a lot from the public that there's a confusion about a budget and a salary schedule. And I think those of us who work for public sector agencies see it as just really common, like you want to see how much the agency you're applying for pays its research analysts and you go and you go, oh, it's between X number and X number. And the salary range is dependent on a number of factors, including how long you've been there and what kind of skills you bring in education and many different factors, but especially anywhere with a unionized workforce, you really have to have a salary schedule that, you know, it's an open and transparency thing that public agencies have to just let people know like what they pay in, you know, that range. So I want to thank you for just clarifying that because I think that's been really confusing to a lot of people.
I just want to mention one thing. The housing specialist is a title. It's not the classification. So it wasn't missed. It's assistant planner, correct?
That's correct. The housing specialist could be an assistant or associate planner.
Okay. Anyway, so I think we're ready for our mayor to call for a motion.
Go for it.
Sorry, I just know that you've been working on this for a long time. And I know it was a lot of work, even though it's a small report, it was a lot of work. So thank you. And I don't know if it was anyone noted, but the last time this was done was nine years ago. No? Well, I say, it says 2016.
Let me take a look.
Anyway.
Thanks for picking that up. That's an error because it's been revised several times.
Gets revised every time there are new MOUs with the different management classes, right? Which is not infrequent.
I, I think that's actually supposed to be October 16th. Is that what you're looking at?
In fact, it's been revised several times in the last year. So it's not 2016. It's been revised several times in 2023, et cetera. So
But Christine is saying the 1016 is today's date.
Yeah.
That's the revised date.
Yeah, it's under review today.
Got it. I, I see what you're seeing and I apologize. We missed the slash 24.
Got it. Thank you.
Hey.
Okay, would a council member like to make a motion?
I'm happy to move this item.
I'll second.
All right.
Okay, so Councilmember Cutrone first and Vice Mayor Blash second.
Deputy Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash. Yes. Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
All eyes.
Okay. The next item is item four, authorize the town mana, oh, sorry. No, oh my gosh. I still, I'm mixed up. I'm mixed up. No, here we go. Second agenda item. The next item is item two. Discussion of naming of the recently acquired open space property. I'd like to ask Town Manager Abrams to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Christine can pull up the slideshow, please.
Heather, I just want to ask you if you could talk a little closer to the mic because you have a soft voice.
Am I doing it again?
You are doing it again. Thank you.
Thank you. So the item today before you is really to have a discussion about the property that we recently celebrated the ribbon cutting four. And it is commonly known as the wall property. And it is ready for potential new names. And so just pulling that up, no worries. And I'm also pulling it up on my little screen here. Okay. Biring all cylinders now. So this is just a wonderful picture that Stephanie Mohan took of our ribbon cutting event just a couple of days ago. And I just wanted to make sure we saw that. So if you can go to the next slide, please. There were about 100 people at the event and I just want to acknowledge that it was really amazing. We have come so far in a short time. And this just is a reminder of all of the acquisition milestones that we have had so far. Including coming to today is the, is the next part. So we put the information about the ribbon cutting in the newsletter and invited people to send in their ideas on possible naming for this property and its features. And if you can go to the next slide, please. This is the map you saw previously. This is the maintenance agreement map. But what it shows is that there are a couple of main trails, so trailheads associated with that. There are meadows and overlooks, those kinds of things that you could choose to name, which gives you then the opportunity to choose more than one name. Next slide, please. And so we wanted to kind of bring it home and let you discuss specifically if you want to identify certain features that you'd like to name. And if you'd liked us to do more outreach on, to the community on naming, we could certainly do more of a an online survey, which would not be a scientific survey, but just an online survey of residents and what they'd like to see named. And so we'd like your input on that. And then if you'd like, we could bring that back to, to another meeting and you could, you know, make some decisions. My suggestion would be that once you have this discussion here, that we go back and work with the subcommittee to kind of get it to the next step. So I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Town Manager Abrams. I'd like to open this item up to public.
No. Okay, so we want to ask if council members have questions. I think our script is missing things. So we'd like to ask if council members have questions of staff and then we'll, okay. Sorry, our mayor has done a great job.
I'm doing my best.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm just wondering a couple of things. I like, well, I can't tell you what I, I guess we're not debating or discussing right now. I was wondering about the possibility of additional benches. Is there a possibility for that?
I think we could do that. And the, the town has a memorial bench donation program. So that might be one way to add benches. What we want to do is keep the site very natural. So we're not planning on building any kind of structures or, and, you know, doing any more grading or anything like that. But I think adding benches very strategically could be done.
And just one thing I want to add. When the topic of the bench for our million dollar donor's wife who passed on, I spoke to Max Corton, who at that point was the director of Marin County Open Space. They do not do benches in their open space. So I think we want to be, there's a balance. You know, we don't want to be populating the open space and changing the features by a series of benches. There might be a need for one or two others, but we want to keep this raw land, natural land. And so just think about that as, you know, signs, interpretive signs might be something, but just, I just want to throw that out there.
Any other questions? No. Okay. Now I would like to open it up to public comment. Two minutes each.
Thank you, Mayor Philip. Another reason to consider putting benches on the property is far beyond just sitting or resting. It also gives an opportunity for someone to say where they are should they need help. If they saw something, they can say, I don't know, there's 100 acres, but you know, I was by the Alborro bench and I started going up the hill and I saw this. So it also gives a proximity should an emergency response need to be there, that they have kind of like a landmark that people can readily understand. They're not going to understand, hey, I was by the Valley Oak that missed the branch up by the large rock in the third ravine. They won't get that. But if they have a reference point to a bench, they can readily find somebody and help them. Additionally, each of those benches can not just speak to people that of the day we want to represent, but people have been here all the way back to the Seas family. So all the different tribes and different families that have been here and the people that over the years, like Dr. Wall bought that property with two other people. So there are actually three people that purchased it when he came into possession of it. And all those people should get the recognition that have held that property until this time. So I hope you'll consider it for the proper recognition as well as for a reference point. So somebody can receive the help should they need that help or to share something going on. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening again there. Rick Hamer, downtown Fairfax. You wouldn't tell by looking at me, but I own a mountain too. And being someone who owns a mountain, you don't really own a mountain. You're the custodian of the mountain. The coastal Mewoc must have called this hill something. And I think that it's up to us to investigate widely what they may have called it. And that involves more than the tribal elders that are up in Graydon and includes the local southern Marin Mewocs. I, I know we named our mountain, actually we named it Portus Celeste, which is Italian for heaven's gate or gateway to the heaven. But our intent is to give it back to the, to our local tribe because that's who we're the custodians for and they'll name it. So I think that we should just skip that step and we should just go right to naming it according to how the indigenous people who must have had a name for it called it. Thanks. Oh, and about the, and about the, about the benches. I guess last night I was watching the comet up there at, at, you know, San Geronimo up on that hill. And all I could think of is I wish I was at O'Rourke's bench. So benches are good, you know, so some benches would be there. Let's name the benches over, about people or the donors or whatever. But I think the mountain itself should be, which should be an indigenous name. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. I'm wondering, since you're taking our taxpayer dollars and you've accepted donations for this property, how you would think that you alone would make these decisions in a rapid manner without reaching out to each and every single donor and each and every single person in Fairfax and getting their input? It's not that hard to do. I think this is representative of how you have conducted business for the last four years. Not listening to people, making decisions on your own without sharing all the information. My suggestion is that you actually, without paying for an outside consultant, look within your staff that is already getting paid and find out how to do a survey. Perhaps on social media or perhaps some other methodology, but you consider that without added expense to the public. And you reach out to every single person who made a donation. You get their input. There's a lot of good ideas here in Fairfax and you don't have to pay an outside consultant. And you don't have to anger people by disregarding them. Please consider this. Thank you.
Next speaker.
There's one speaker on Zoom. Lynn, you are unmuted.
Hi, I needed an explanation at some point about why naming the wall property took priority over the unhoused situation on the agenda tonight. About renaming the wall property, property. I don't understand why this is even up for discussion. Sounds like vanity, power trip. What do you mean? The council has the power to possibly name each trail. This was not on anything I signed when I made a donation that you guys were going to be changing the name of the property. The town raised money on that name. However, I think Mr. Wall could have built a lot of things up there before the environmental issues came through. They were mild then and he didn't. So thank you, Wall family. Build as many benches, tributes, wildlife, education, signs as your donors need. But the people I know didn't donate so they would have the property named after them. It's a vanity move. And why is this happening before an election? That's really unnerving. I've spoken to chants in my neighbors about putting up a sign that says, open at sunrise, closed at sunset. We suggested a locked chain fence at the Marin Drive entrance so people would not enter after hours. We want to notice that it's a ticketed violation if they do. There's no camping allowed for anyone. We're concerned that town council and the police department will continue their pattern of unenforced laws and ordinances for the unhoused at the children's park and baseball field. And they will use the same logic on the wall property. What's the plan to stop that now? That it's not, that it's town property and not private. All dogs must be on a leash. There's no, there's too much wildlife up there to disrupt. Also, you guys removed the bike ramps off and the illegal trails. I hope it stays that way so that they only stay on the fire road. Last month, there was a party with 100 kids up there and the police couldn't handle it because there weren't enough police. I called my mayor for help and was texted that she couldn't talk. We were desperate up here on the hill. There's nothing keeping that from happening again. And there's several ways to gain access.
Next speaker, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
There is one more speaker on Zoom. Brenna, you are unmuted.
Hi, I just wanted to chime in about this as well. I think we're, I think it's a rush to try and name the property right now. And really, I mean, this is a first actually that I've even heard of the naming of it. So I don't feel like you guys really got the word out about it. And I strongly agree with the gentleman before who spoke about if we are going to rename it, definitely bring it back to the coastal. definitely bring it back to the coastal Miwok and let them choose a name or, or name it. The, or give it back the name that it was. And I don't, I don't know if like everyone realizes or knew about the huge party that happened up there. Lynn just spoke of it and it was really disturbing for the whole neighborhood. Kids were speeding up and down the road. Tons of garbage was left and people like family members who were leaving my home were driving down the hill with children in their car and nearly got hit. And there was nobody to deal with it. The police were busy with another call. It totally left it wide open up here. So it would really be great if there were more, if there was more presence up here. And yeah, that's about it. Thank you so much.
Any more on Zoom?
There is one more speaker on Zoom. Deb, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Deborah Benson Cascades. Thank you for hearing me. I wanted to continue on what Lynn was saying before she ran out of time. Years ago, we were talking about the use of the Elliott Preserve in the Cascades. There was a meeting at town hall. I was asking for enforceable hours of operation of the Marin County Open Space. And I was told, we don't work at night. Call the sheriff. So perhaps we could call the sheriff if our police are inadequate to, to represent a law enforcement, to protect the residents from things like, you know, 100 kids up there doing whatever they're doing. Perhaps the council could get involved in setting up a network of protection for the residents. And I also agreed that I don't think it should be up to five of you to rename the, the property and the hill. Perhaps there was a name for it from people who lived here before we all did. If there was, I would suggest bringing that back. If not, bring it out to the public. So that's about what I have to say. Thank you for hearing me again.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Before we go on, I want to clarify a couple of things. Police responded to that party and were actually very assertive. And that was the former owner who had a different view of the world than some of us do. I also want to clarify something about one of the potential options here is there was closing the funding gap by Diana Wall and some of her siblings. And they had asked a consideration, not of the wall property, but Doris and C. Allen Wall as a consideration. So obviously what we're bringing this forward for is to just throw out potential options to consider because folks have been asking for this. And the idea is we're not making any decisions tonight. If there were to be a survey, it would be done with town staff. It would not be with a consultant. And I want to just clarify that the money was raised by the Marin Open Space Trust. And we contributed 100,000 from our Measure A money that we squirreled away for about eight to nine to 10 years to get to that point. So that's where we're at and I will let our mayor for the day take over now, asking for deliberation.
Okay, thank you. Would a council member like to make a motion? I thought we knew that we go back. Questions first, then deliberation.
Then deliberations are over, then you make, then yeah.
Okay, okay.
You just say, does anyone have any more comments?
Does anyone have any more comments?
And then, yeah.
Go for it.
So I'm in favor of a community survey and, you know, as far as what that approach might look like, I would encourage us to get some ideas from the Greaton and the other coastal Miwok groups here locally. You know, just to, it's easier for people when taking a survey, they have something to respond to rather than just, you know, provide fill in the blank ideas. So that would be my recommendation or hope that we do. Because I don't think that we did give much time to, to, we got, we only got four or five emails today related to, I know it was in the town newsletter, so that was good, but I think we need to get more reach out there.
Councilmember Ackerman? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go over there first.
Okay. All right. I thought you were, okay, well, I, I basically, I think it's very clear to all of us, certainly clear to me that we're not renaming it tonight. So in case there was any confusion about that, no, this is just a discussion session. And it's sort of by discussing this, it helps to get it out to the public so that people can start thinking about it. So rather than reacting with hostility, maybe react with creativity and think about what would be a good name. I agree with what council member Hellman said, that I think it would be a good idea to, and I don't know who would do this or how we would go about it, but I think it would be good to, to try to find out what name or names might be suggested for, to go back to the Miwok names. Just as a possibility for us to think about, know what, know what it might be on the table. But, and it's, well, that's all I have to comment on at this point about it. And I do, certainly, we're not going to do it before the election under the present circumstances in the town. So we're all clear on that. Yeah.
Councilmember Cutrano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like, we literally just cut the ribbon on this property on Monday. It's, it's like, I think it's just inappropriate and rushed to start having these sorts of discussions. I think this is the type of thing that the community like gets riled up about or gets concerned about when, you know, something happens and then all of a sudden there are, there are a bunch of changes that are being proposed. I think there is no rush to this process. I mean, I heard that there were petitions that intended to be on the meeting tonight. As tough as those conversations are, I'd rather we have done that than have this agenda item, given how this is not a time sensitive item. That said, I think we have an open space committee. I would love to, they are supposed to advise the council about things related to open space. I'd love for that to go, this to go to them before it comes to us. I think it makes a lot of sense to engage with the Federated Indians of Greaton Rancheria and, and tribal elders and individuals throughout Marin to understand the history and the, you know, the original name of this land as one of the options. But I think this, this is kind of like a, a once in a lifetime sort of thing. The acquisition of a, a big piece of land like this and the opportunity to work with the community and work with the tribe to, to understand the history of this land and to go through a, a really intentional and creative process to figure out what we collectively want to, want to call it. And we should take our time to do that. I think we should put up a sign at the property that says, this is town of Fairfax and here are the rules for this property. I think we should do that really quickly. And I think the only other thing that's really time sensitive is coming up with that plan for vegetation management on the property. Aside from that, I think we should take a, a slower approach to engaging with stakeholders like the tribe, Fairfax Open Space Committee, Marin Open Space Trust and the donors that had contributed to the property and the general public, whether that's through a community survey that we roll out through the newsletter or push out through social media or something like that. I think there are creative ways that we can do that and make it really fun and, and bring a lot of youth. Reach out to the schools and see what, you know, kids at White Hill and Manor and Archie are, you know, have to say, or Ross Valley Charter, or Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. So it, it's a really cool opportunity. I don't think we need to, to rush it, but that's, those are my two cents.
Yeah, I like the idea of having the open space committee really deeply engaged since they've been engaged all along and they can do really great community outreach. I do like the idea of a community survey. I'm just going to clarify that a community survey that's soliciting information voluntarily from people about a name or creative idea is different than a scientific survey, which is meant to develop a picture that can be projected to the entire population. So I think that the online survey, which is not a random sample, but it's just outreach to the community to ask them to willingly input ideas would be great. But I would start with the open space committee just because they've had such an integral role in getting this off the ground and raising the funds and everything. Not a bad idea. I agree with other people about reaching out to Greaton Rancheria and whether that's for naming the property or possibly adding more, you know, information that people can get to via a QR code or something on signs would be great. And I do also think that getting, going on some idea about, some rules about how it could be used is really important. And I like council member Cutrano's mention of having a sign that sort of delineates what's allowed and what's not allowed up there. I know a lot of people have been anxious about that. So thank you.
So I'm in agreement that there's no rush. And the reason this was brought was because there were some folks specifically asking that it be brought. It's really just touching the surface and we wanted to get the idea out there. Frankly, we don't have to name the property. There's also that. I want to just say as far as consulting with tribes, there's a protocol. That's not the open space committee's protocol. It would be council member Cutrano and I, excuse me. And, but I agree, there's no rush. And I think starting at the open space committee with ideas and having folks come. But one of the things I want to throw out there is rather than even naming the property, we've talked about trails. And one of the things we did talk to the folks that came from Greaton was about interpretive signs and potentially naming trails. So we're not there yet and I want to say I appreciate our staff bringing this and just throwing out options. And there's no disagreement as far as doing a survey eventually, and that would be with town staff. But let's get, and I think council member Hellman brought this up, I think it was you, that let's wait till we have more information, more ideas. And let's like the open space committee start the process and perhaps council member Cutrano and I can circle back with the folks at the tribe to just open the conversation, not necessarily put a bow in it. So I don't think you need a motion. I think there's really just discussion.
If, if I may, right, so the intention of this item was not to have a motion, but simply to have a discussion. And I did write some notes down about who to contact and I think we have next steps ready to go. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item is item three. Adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with the INFILA in an online permitting system. I'd like to ask the Planning and Building Services Director Jeff Beisweiler to present the, the staff report.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Kohler and Mayor Felix. And by the way, I'd like to say, you know, if you ever get tired being in the political world, you should consider a, the planning profession. So anyway, I'm always looking for recruits. The, one thing that I would like to mention upfront is that we have had, we have currently have kind of a paper-based system for managing planning and building permits. We do kind of supplement that with electronic systems like Mark Lockaby did manage to find kind of a desktop version of a permit tracking software to enable that. You know, we've been getting along pretty well since I see the logo behind you says 1931. So with kind of this paper-based system, that is, that has worked so far because we, we know we're a small town. We haven't, we don't get a ton of permits. And also the, it, it hasn't been overly complex over the years. However, things have, and then also another thing that we've, that have kind of scared us away in the past after talking to Linda and Mark about when they've considered permit tracking systems in the past. Because many of the fellow, our fellows in other jurisdictions use TrackIt or other permit tracking software is that it's, it's very expensive and kind of this old kind of clunky software that doesn't really work very well for some small towns. So anyway, but the reason we're bringing this to you tonight is because we think the time has finally arrived because all of these factors are converging. The first is that the, the cost of the permit tracking software has, has come way down. And it's also, you're able to kind of, with all the web-based systems that are out there, you're able to get something that's smaller and kind of more customized for a, a small town like Fairfax. So that's kind of one factor. Another factor is we have introduced a lot of complexity into our permit system, particularly on the planning side. It is not unusual for kind of a, a simple home remodel to have a variance, a CUP, a hillside residential development permit, a design review, all kind of in one package. And so it'd be nice to have a system which could kind of better ma- manage that complexity. And then also there's, there's some, a little bit of fragmentation that occurs between the planning and the building because right now there's a kind of two separate systems where we kind of get through our planning entitlements and we hand it off to Mark and then he does his building permits. And that works well because, you know, we have a very stable staff and Linda and Mark and, and myself and Kara and Bryn and everybody kind of gets along. We have a very good working relationship, but it's very personality based. It's not, it would be, there would be a great benefit to being able to network this and kind of put all of these things under kind of one umbrella. And then also in terms of like looking towards the future, we also want a system that's kind of a little bit better to manage from a records retention standpoint. We have like, you know, rooms full of filing cabinets right now, which isn't helpful when we're searching for records sometimes, even though they're very well organized, I will say. And this would allow us to work kind of more efficiently. And so we did investigate, just to briefly, I don't want to make this a very, a real long presentation. So I'm going to try to keep this short, but we did investigate other possibilities. And so kind of the, one of the ones that we investigated was kind of that old, I don't know if you want legacy system, I guess you'd say, which is called Central Square TrackIt. They're used by San Anselmo, for example. They're a little bit expensive and then also kind of bigger than what we need. They're designed to, to kind of scale up to very large communities. Same thing with Clarita, which is another one we looked at, which, you know, does the building permits for Los Angeles, for example. They have a less expensive version that they've designed to work with smaller communities called Camino. And so we looked at that. That was a possibility, but it's, it's somewhat limited and really is mostly designed just for building permits and can't really handle the planning permits as well, some of the other systems. One attractive option was OpenGov, which was similar to INFILA in some ways where it was, it's kind of, it's smaller, more nimble. And, and we got demos from that and from INFILA and we were impressed by, by aspects of both. INFILA seemed to be a little bit more customizable and just a little bit less expensive. And then also the other thing that I would say is that the one thing that's nice about the INFILA option is they have the ability to kind of roll it out in modules. So we can kind of, especially since we've been doing the, the same thing on a paper-based system for, for decades. It's, it, it's going to be useful to kind of roll this out a little piece at a time. And so they allow that to happen where a lot of the companies that do permit tracking, they just kind of, they want to take everything in their black box and then just kind of take it to the back office and then bring it to you and then just roll it out all at once. Whereas INFILA has this really nice kind of iterative process where they can roll it out a module at a time. They can work with us on a very hands-on basis and make sure that it works before we move on to the next module. basis and make sure that it works before we move on to the next module. So we, so we're really, we were really impressed with INFILA and we think it'd be a great option for, for the town to help us kind of get more organized from a permit tracking system. The other thing that it helps us with is that whole, that fragmentation I discussed earlier where we have the, kind of the separation between the planning and the building entitlements. It, their system allows you to kind of organize the plan, planning permits and the building permits kind of under the same umbrella. So it's kind of all easy to find based on address and, and location versus just on a kind of permit number, which is a lot of the downfall of some of these permit tracking systems where they're very hardcoded to permit numbers and, and that type of system. This seems to have a little more flexibility in that area. And then another benefit of using the, I mean, I think it would be the, the best system with or without this, but we did manage to secure a $25,000 grant to help us with startup costs for this permit tracking. And this is because this, the partnership for Bay's Future, which is kind of a, it's affiliated with the San Francisco Foundation. They are also impressed with INFILA and they would like for communities to kind of test them out so that they can help streamline the development approval process with the kind of an eye towards making housing approvals easier, particularly for, for ADUs and multifamily. And we do a lot of ADUs in Fairfax. So we're a really good test case for them in terms of ADU processing. So anyway, and also it's a, it's a young company. And so we're, you know, we're going to be able to get a lot of hands-on treatment where we wouldn't get with some of these more legacy companies where we would just be kind of one of their many clients. We're not going to be the first client by any means, but we're going to be, you know, I think they've, Jenny, Jenny Song with INFILA is, is on the webinar. If you'd like to get some more technical information or ask her questions directly about INFILA. But they've, they've been working in Sonoma County and San Francisco and a couple of their local jurisdictions and they've come highly recommended. So, so with that, I think I'm available.
Did you cover the costs? I don't think.
Oh, sure. The cost is the.
Mention the grant when you wrap it up. I know you already mentioned the grant, but how much it will actually cost us. Thank you.
The implementation fee is $40,000. And then the first year cost is $25,000. So basically, so our first year cost will be just the implementation, implementation fee with the grant offsetting it. And then each year it would be, the annual fee kind of goes up by a thousand to kind of, for, to cover the cost of, you know, the consumer price index increase. So $1,000 a year. So it's 26,000 next year, then 27, 28, 29, and then thirty.
I think a lot of that, so number one is 40,000 for implementation, 25,000 the first year, but because we have that grant, it's 40,000 the first year. And I believe in what I researched, it's not about the CPI, it's about the mobility to do upgrades. So one of the things you want with software as a service is to make sure the company is continuing to upgrade. And that's really important because these things get stale. And that's one of the reasons, having worked on this a lot in other places, software as a service makes you more nimble versus a hardcoded piece of software that becomes very stale. So that's. Yes. So basically, software as a service with this $1,000 upgrade every year means that they're constantly upgrading the system. So it's not stale. And so when you have a hardcoded piece of software that you buy, it becomes old in about a year. So just want to add that because that is a little more important than any kind of increase. It's just making sure that they're keeping the software constantly changing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Felix and you ask for questions.
Do any council members have any questions or comments? Councilmember Ackerman?
Yeah. Thank you for, for your written report and your summary of it. So I'm, I'm sure that this is, this transition would be, I'm just verifying that it would be in, in compliance with the records retention policy that we recently went over in detail and, and adopted. And then as we, you were, you were explaining that.
It's being recorded, so make sure we can do that. Thank you.
Yeah. So the, you were mentioning the, the rollout being sort of in stages on INFILA's part, which sounds, sounds useful. And with that, in, we've got probably a certain number of both building permits and planning applications that are in process right now. How would they be handled? Would some of them just be finished up on paper? Or would they be switched over? Would there be any delay in any of the current processes in order to, to get them into INFILA?
Well, the first, it would be, this would be helpful from a records retention standpoint. It'd be, it's much easier to tag things by date in particular, if you have it in a permit tracking system. And then in terms of, we would probably just start with a new permits. Just have a, if we started something on a paper permit, we would just finish it out. And then by a certain date, anything that was new, we would just start putting that into the new system. And then in the future, if we had the ability to kind of go back and bring things in, we, we might, because that would be a benefit to help us get rid of the older paper in the future. But we would mostly focus on kind of this point moving forward. So. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have questions about the, the resident side, the user experience there. And maybe somebody, you said there was somebody from INFILA on, on the web, on the Zoom. But so the first question I have, which I think the answer is yes, I hope the answer is yes, is you can pay online, right?
Yes. And I think, and that's one thing I probably didn't cover as much as I should have. And maybe I should give Jenny Song, the, one of the owners of INFILA a chance to talk. But the, the big, one of the big benefits of this particular system is the transparency. So the idea is that it would, I mean, staff could certainly take in the application, just like we do now, and then put it in the system. But then this would also have a web-based option where you could have people apply and online.
Sure.
And then also they would be able to go in and see the, the status of the project.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. As a, as a resident or someone who applied, you can just log in and see where, where you are in the lifecycle of, of the permit application or what have you. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And would you like to hear more on that from, from, from Jenny Song with INFILA?
Sure. I'm sure she has something to add.
Okay.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
It was a great question that you asked. It's one of the reasons why we exist is that we're based on over 600 hours of research with over 250 government staff and applicants in over 50 jurisdictions. And we heard time and time again with existing systems that it's hard to tell what is actually going on. And so it was a priority for us to have a smooth, transparent, intuitive system that guides people through the application process as well as understanding what the status of their project would be. We have a principle that my grandmother should be able to fill out an application without needing a planning degree, which is not the typical case for a lot of jurisdictions today. And so we're really excited to work with Fairfax in making that happen for its residents.
Great. And so sometimes things, you know, go to the planning commission, there's takeaways and they have to come back. And so will your staff be putting in kind of like the next steps? So, so a user or resident knows exactly what the status is? Do you know what I'm saying? Like.
There's, yeah, well, I'll let, I'll let Jenny explain this, but they do have a really nice calendar feature. So, so if you, if you want to explain how that works, Jenny, that'd be useful.
Yeah, there's the ability to basically, and this is slightly different from other permitting systems that were focused on building and on permits. So there's not that concept of having any meetings in their system versus ours. We consider planning and building integrated together. So meetings and meeting decisions would be part of this.
Great.
I, I just think it's not totally, I don't see how INFILA would know what happened at the planning commission. I think what Councilmember Hellman was asking, if something gets approved at the planning commission, would your staff, Jeff, your staff input that into the calendar feature so that the user, the person who could go online and see what's next? So we don't have to constantly remind folks or depend on them to remember.
Or that's like a happy path. Sometimes it's not approved, right? And you have to go XYZ, you have to go get another, whatever, you know, so how, and maybe the resident doesn't necessarily understand what happened at the, you know, so will, will it be listed there? Or sorry if I'm asking too many questions.
No, no, you're correct. It would require, I mean, our staff. The idea is that INFILA has the platform and then we are doing the inputting. So, and, but they're back there behind the scenes, making sure that it works and they're updating it so that it can, yeah.
If, is there any messaging capability?
Yes.
There is. Okay. So I keep wanting to.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a, there is one of the modules is, it's kind of similar, if you've heard of Slack.
Uh huh.
It's kind of similar to that. So.
Well, and another just cost benefit in terms of your staff time and efficiency is, I mean, you're going to save a lot.
Yes, yes. I mean, maybe not right away. There will be a little bit of a startup time, but yeah, eventually it will be very much more efficient. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more questions?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you would talk more about the benefits to staff time. I mean, I know that when people have adopted things like electronic health records, they actually end up taking more time out of medical staff's time. But this seems like it might actually facilitate staff efficiency and time spent. Does that seem right?
Yeah. And I think it, I think at first it'll probably be about the same amount of time. But I think moving forward, it will, it will make us more and more efficient. And then I think the, the area where it's really going to make us efficient, if we need to go back and look for records that occurred, that will be much faster. So kind of from a, a public information request and be able to produce documents that people are asking for will be much easier.
Okay, that's great. And I guess the other question I had is, I guess, more sort of a hypothetical. It seems like when you get software, you're often concerned that the company will be in business like X years from now. And if it's a new company, should we be worried about them not being able to stay in business because they're not a long-term company that's been around for a while?
Jeff, I can speak to.
Okay, go, go ahead, Jenny.
Yeah, I can understand your concern because we are a younger company, but we are also working with larger jurisdictions like Sonoma County and San Francisco and anticipate, you know, longer relationships. And so I think we're here for the long haul and we would not want to put Fairfax in any sort of poor position. So we feel confident in this area.
Okay. So I'm sorry, if you could name again some of the other jurisdictions you're working with?
Yeah, sure. San Francisco, Sonoma County, Richmond. Those are the partners that we have today.
Okay, great. Whoops. And I had one other question. I'm just, you know, curious a little bit about, you know, just the number of permits we're likely to process. It sounds like the biggest issue is that we have a lot of remodels, we have a lot of complexity because of the non-standardness of our properties in Fairfax. And then I guess we may be anticipating more building as a result of sort of the arena requirements. Is that?
Yeah, I think the main thing that's caused the, the uptick, I think there's been a fairly substantial uptick in permit processing over the past few years. And that's mostly from turnover of housing where people are coming into the community and buying homes or remodeling them. That's kind of one factor. The second factor is accessory dwelling units are a lot easier to build now. So that's kind of a, a secondary factor. And some, and those get merged into one. So it's, it's, there seems to be a lot of people interested in kind of buying properties and then improving them in Fairfax. Or people that live here are interested in improving their own homes or adding an ADU or, or expanding the home for their growing families, that, that type of thing. That's kind of our bread and butter. Kind of the, the, there are a few bigger projects, but those don't happen very often. So that's really not the, the biggest factor that, that we're dealing with. I mean, it would be helpful to help with those larger projects, but it's mostly what we're interested in is the, the homeowner projects and increasing the transparency and helping those move a little bit more smoothly through the process.
Councilmember Cutrano?
Thank you. All good questions. Thank you. I had three questions. First question is, how many other communities in Marin currently have this sort of digital system? Are we, are we one of the few that are the holdouts that don't have any sort of digital system where people can do payments or see the status online?
Well, there's, there's a difference there. There's, most jurisdictions have some sort of permit tracking system. I mean, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think Ross does, or I could be wrong there, but, or, or Belvedere, because they have very low level of permanent activity. But yeah, most jurisdictions in Marin County do have some sort of permit tracking system. And, but not all of them have kind of the, the web-based online interface.
Got it. Okay. So it might be internal as opposed to like an external facing thing. And this would give us both. Two question, I have a lot of comments. I'm excited that we're talking about this, but I'll reserve those until after I get to hear from the public. The two questions I have remaining are, one, to Vice Mayor Blash's comment, you know, new startup companies, tech companies, really exciting. Sometimes they're a little fly-by-night and one day it's great, the next day you can't get in touch with them. We've experienced this at the Transportation Authority of Marin, trying to start up a, a bike share program in Marin and Sonoma Counties and a number of these companies we offer the contract, go dark after a couple of years. Sounds like there's some really reputable clients that, that INFILA has. But I'm curious what like the customer service for the town is like. Is it, is it kind of like a 24-hour availability? Or like, how does that piece work for you all? Is it, like, we're lucky we have Marin IT. Whenever there's some crazy thing that goes wrong, they're, they're always a call away. But how does the customer service fee piece fit into all this for the town?
Yeah, I think the idea is that they would, they would be, I don't know if it's 24 hours a day, but they would be able to be on call, particularly for the first several years to, to help us out with our issues. And the other thing I will say about the kind of the fly-by-night thing, and maybe Jenny needs to cover her ears, but we would have the, I think we would insist upon kind of maintaining control over the data. So if something did happen and say INFILA were to kind of go out of business, then we would still have the data. And it's relatively common. In fact, we're, we are going to be doing the same thing with the Clariti data that we have on Mark's computer, is that that can be ported over to this system. And so if we have a data that collects under the INFILA system, it'll be in a format where we can, we could transport that to another permitting system. And that's actually fairly common. I think jurisdictions do tend to, not frequently, but it is pretty common for people to switch from one platform to another in this particular arena.
I, yes, that you, you already knew where I was going with my third question. So I, I suspect it'd be good for business if people are able to, you know, merge files to other platforms and things like that. So that's great to hear that we, if we move forward with this, that we would have files that would be able to move to one of the other providers potentially. I hope that's not, that we don't have to do that. I hope that it all works out and it's great. And so just to confirm or clarify, the, the customer support or the client support for the town, that's, is that, that's part of the contract? that's, is that, that's part of the contract? Part of the annual subscription? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. In fact, Jenny, would you like to talk about that a little bit? You can probably explain how you operate in that area.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for asking. It's a really great question. Obviously you're one of four clients, so we, we treat you very, very, very seriously. And our team is accessible via text message, phone call, email, Microsoft Teams. We talk daily with our customers and we look forward to having that sort of relationship with the Fairfax team too.
Great. Thank you so much. Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you. I think we've pretty much covered this, but I brought this up beforehand. So not just going and solving it, but we also have things where startup companies often get bought. And then when you have software as a service, you're captured and the rates jack up. What I had asked for was that we consider an escrow agreement for software code. And the response back was software code gets outdated. And, but usually with an escrow agreement, you require that the updated code keeps getting added. I realize we don't have the technical expertise, should that happen, to recreate the software, which is the code. But I see in the effects of termination, if there is that, the end user, uh, can access the services for up to 30 days after termination of this agreement, to the extent necessary to retrieve customer data. And my question is, is 30 days enough? I mean, you know, we are a very small staff. And if we, and I think you mentioned that the data is something that once we got it, it would be usable and be able to transfer to another format. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we would make sure that that would happen.
Okay. So my question is, I would sort of like us to get 60 days to retrieve the data in that event. That's one change to the agreement because I think it's more likely with a startup company that they get bought by somebody bigger. And then sometimes we're held hostage to higher rates. So I would want us to be able to retrieve the data and have enough time to do that as well as start looking for another company. Potentially we do an extension with the new company. But I'd like us to be able to really protect ourselves and the ability to go to a new company and really have time to pull that data out. I realize this is, um, coming the night, but I had asked these questions beforehand and really think we ought to ask for 60 days to be able to retrieve the data in case that happens. So is that something we could do?
Yes, of course.
Uh, Jenny, you're on.
Yeah, yes. I, I, I agree with you, Mayor. So we can change that to 60 days.
Okay. So if, if we move forward and adopting this, we would make that one change to the agreement. So I think that's, I think our town attorney has a comment.
Hi, Jenny, this is Janet Coulson.
Janet, you need to speak into.
I'm going to speak right into it there. Is that good? Okay. Um, anyway, we, um, we will be having conversations about the agreement. So we will also include that as part of our conversation.
Okay. So are you inferring that we're changing the agreement now? Because if we adopt this motion.
It's substantially in form.
I'm not sure what that means.
That means that this is the format, this is the outline of the agreement. And so it's substantially in this form, but the, the details can mod, can be modified.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that if we do that, we make sure that we're adding 60 days.
Okay.
To retrieve data, uh, when, when and if we do a motion. So thank you. That's.
I understand.
Last of the council member, you can open it up to public comment.
Okay. Thank you, council, council members. Um, I would like to open this matter up to public comment. Two minutes each. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, Rick Kammer, Downtown Fairfax. I don't know how they can do this at this price point. I basically am looking at where the pricing is and I would be very cautious. It's, there's missing a number of pieces to this. For example, just in, in this concern about getting the data out, the data needs to be able to be exportable and portable from other formats easily and under our control. Additionally, you know, starting from, uh, November 1st, 2024, if you've ever had to search the building permits here in Fairfax, you would know that it is quite a project, especially when you have to go to Frank Egger's garage to find missing, missing data. Because we do that, don't we? Okay. So we, once we import this data, this is a massive job. And it's got to be into a format that, that can move across platforms. So, uh, I, I'm really concerned at the price point. I'm really concerned about missing pieces in the contract. I've done this stuff before. I, I mean, I've, I've tried to hire companies for, for our clients, which are very big clients. And, and, um, you know, we, we spot a company that's almost formed with the intent of being bought. You know, they set it up and we're looking to be attractive so that we can be purchased by a bigger entity. And then everything changes. And so I think, um, first of all, I'd really far more comfortable if we saw a demonstration going on this without any demonstration, I click on the website and I can't see the demonstration. We should have a demonstration before we move. Uh, thank you.
All right. Next speaker, please.
And the gong rings. Actually, I think Rick brought up some very important points. I hope you guys would listen. The very first thing I'd do before entering into this contract is include a clause in his contract that says there is an export provision and define what you'd like. You might want to have a fixed length as well as a comma delimited. You may want to just say in simple terms that you want it in Excel format, but something that's uniformly accepted. So other times, if you do go somewhere else and you migrate your information, you can interpret it somewhere else. You can park it somewhere else. You can have somebody else dig through it. Overall, the surf, the software, I think is a very good thing. It takes away a lot of the arbitrary and objectiveness that comes with liabilities for the town. The disadvantage is if you do not have an access or to a specific component or a building block of this software, it's also biased. It's prejudiced from listening to the prior clients, large cities. And what we don't want, we don't want a uniform building with a uniform material built. So in other words, they will probably be speaking about different types of face and surface of buildings for fire and different things that might not really represent what you want in Fairfax. So you want to make sure that you have that ability to come in and customize it for your town, which would still be, if you set it in advance, it would not be arbitrary. It would not be, um, just something on a whim. You could make something very standard. So you could avoid the same liabilities, but the very most important thing that Rick brought up is an exportable format. And then you define what kind of format you want. Don't let them say what you want. Say, I want it in a comma delimited. I want it in a fixed length. And I also want an Excel format. Between those three, you can always migrate your data to other places. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker.
Frank Egger from the Cascades. This is a very deceptive, agenda description. It says, adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter an agreement with the, in file up for an online permitting system. Accept a grant of amount of $25,000 from Partnership for Bay's Future. Authorize the town manager to pay for contracted services with Infilla. It lists a $25,000 grant, but it's silent on a $150,000 contract that, that the town manager will be signing. I've read the entire nine-page, nine-page contract. This is a new company started in 2024. I could find no records of, of how it operates. There's no city, other cities listed in California that use this service. There's no, there's no report from the town attorney on the, on the nine-page contract as to how Fairfax gets out of it, if, if it needs to get out of it. The, the fact is, it's, it's a, it's a $150,000 five-year contract when you add in the, the $40,000 initial payment. And then I have a question. Does the automatic, does the, does the, does it automatically grant entitlements at the end of its process? Does that, does this software grant the entitlement? Now, I could, I could find no other city that uses the services. So, so the question is, how much, also another question, how much will it cost the applicant to use these services? I mean, I, I don't think it's free. I think there's going to be a, a cost to the applicant to use the services. So, you know, how about the town and those who file for billing permits data and information? Is it protected from hackers? And lastly, I just want to say, why rush into this contract right before the election? Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
All right. Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. Uh, I'm going to pick up where Frank left off. Uh, why rush into this? It's actually fiscally irresponsible, once again, for this town council, that three of which might not be here to sign in for a five-year contract, especially when all the due diligence has not been done, particularly in this report, not all the facts are presented. I'm going to ask you to turn to page two, which is actually page four, but page two from Infilla that talks about including travel-related expenses, which are not defined anywhere in this staff report. So this is actually not presenting the full picture here. Then, um, I wish Jenny and Infilla the best. But I too have significant concerns, given that I have followed and been a beta tester for Metricom, Paul Allen's wireless modem. And I was the first individual user of the Rim BlackBerry that everybody was wild about for so long. And those companies both rose and fell, and then there was nothing left. So there's a real concern here. This is a big risk and it's a material number. $150,000 plus travel expenses. Okay, there's only four clients. There's no goalposts. This is a startup company. Startup teams frequently leave the company. Outside plan check is where this is driving probably, and that drives up costs in all of our communities. Talk to anyone in the building trades. Also, it seems like this might be a, a, a foot in, or lead in for a beginning of rental registration. As, uh, I want to hold this up so everyone can see. Part of the Partnership for a Better Bay Area says tenant power toolkit. This is what they do. This is who's backing this.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I had the same points. County of Marin went out and they couldn't use anyone else's system because it wasn't good enough. So they hired this company and spent millions and millions of dollars developing or county of Marin IT system. They went out of business, system broke down, couldn't transfer anything. So I think as far as, uh, being able to move into, uh, other platforms, I think number one, we need to see that happen. Number two, you know, F this startup company lasts. Maybe there'll be changes throughout the industry and we won't be able to export the data that we have or imported. The other thing I found interesting, uh, and really going back to kind of what Todd was saying, their main investor and maybe their only investor is Bloomberg Data, which I'm assuming is part of the Bloomberg Financial Network. So how secure is our data going to be? How much are we going to put into beefing up our security? We need our own, uh, we, we need our own server to back up all the data. In addition, maybe two in case one goes down. I think that going into this really is rushing into it and, uh, there's no reason to. And just one other question, like what ADUs last? I heard there were four last year.
Are there any people on Zoom?
There are three speakers on Zoom. The first speaker is Jody, followed by Lynn. Jody, you are unmuted.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. Um, I was excited to see this on the agenda. I think some great questions have been asked, council and comments, council asked a lot of the ones I had. I'm sort of, uh, excited that we're looking at this, whether the decision is to go forward or not. I think it's a good idea to move toward online permitting. And particularly in the larger context that, um, I want to set it in for just a second, which is the countywide building electrification roadmap, which was passed, uh, by, or supported by the, um, supervisors yesterday. Has a plan for encouraging the streamlining of permits. Seems to me it's going to be a lot easier to streamline something that's already online tracked. And then also the, uh, one of the 10 actions that are part of this roadmap, which comes out of is the response to a 1922 grand jury, uh, critique of the county and its need to move forward on electrification for our buildings. They're also suggesting that, uh, there be evaluated and implemented, uh, permit discount programs. And it seems to me it's important to look at this piece that you're looking at taking tonight in that larger picture and where we might go, be going in the future. I think looking at, as some people have said, how many permits are we actually doing every year? It would be good to get, start to gather some of that data. It seems like this tracking system would be helpful and doing that so that we could look at what would the impact be of discounting some of our, um, permits, particularly for low-income folks, so that we can start to look at how we might back through that. So I support this, um, and this initiative potentially moving forward. It seems like some good due diligence has been done, uh, particularly given the size of these clients. I don't think they'd be, um, I support it. So thank you very much.
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Lynn. Lynn, you are unmuted.
Hi. Um, I, my first question is security breaches. And if you've ever been hacked or worked for a company that has, it's a big deal when the FBI shows up in your office. Cyber liability. How much does the town of Fairfax even hold for that? How much is this little company holding in their cyber liability? You know, you guys need to have all these scenarios played out so you know what can happen on a dime when there's a problem, when your computers get frozen up and you can't do a thing about it except pay. So you have to wait and you have to learn more. That's all I'm saying. And cyber liability, if this town isn't holding that and a lot of it, somebody's needs to be, job needs to be reviewed. That's it.
Uh, there is one more speaker. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm naive about this process, so I kind of apologize. But I'm kind of, I'm, what I'm curious is what is a smaller municipality it's using? You know what I mean? I just can't. I mean, it's very impressive that their, you know, their clients are San Francisco, Richmond and Santa Rosa. I just don't see Fairfax need or in all of that. And I guess that's why I'm, um, kind of naive in this. Cause they have a lot of different more permits. And I'm also quite confused because Jeff, I had asked you a year ago about why you thought then on a town council meeting, why, I believe this is what we've said. Why did you think ADU production was down? And you said, and I believe you said because of the cost of construction. Yet tonight I heard that, you know, a lot of people are doing construction. So that leaves me kind of confused too. And that's all I have to say. Oh, I do think maybe slow down on this too. I'm just the first I've heard of it. Thanks. Maybe I haven't been paying attention. That's all. Bye. Thanks.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay. Uh, I would like to bring the issue back to council deliberation. I'm closing public comment. Count, uh, Vice, uh, Vice Mayor Blash.
Yeah. Uh, so just curious about the timing of this, like, um, is there a particular reason we need to? Like, um, is there a particular reason we need to decide it now? Is there a timeliness issue with the grant or budget or something else? That's the first one.
No, I, I just think this is simply a, a good opportunity to take advantage of, of, of a, um, a really good software platform and then also be able to take advantage of the grant, which might not be available if we wait. And then it's just good timing for where we are as a, as a governmental institution. It's kind of the right time to be able to transition to online permitting.
And then I did want to mention that, um, you know, so this was budgeted for, right? This isn't like suddenly we came up with this thing. It's, it's, there's a budget line specifically for this that I looked at, but I think I'm correct in that. I think it was fund 01311821, which is outside services, right? That's where we have money set aside for this kind of thing. Okay, so this is not out of the blue. This is something that was being thought of, um, in advance. Okay, so I did want to note that there's a, you know, transparency issue here. You know, it's so hard to get information sometimes on permits. So I like that part of it, but I think the bigger problem sometimes really is the older permits that are not going to be in the system for a long time. I just think of all of the stuff that went on around Crest Road. I don't even know if that would, that kind of thing would be cleared up if we were able to get the older records into the system. So just going to put that out there. So I would really like to see if we get a system, some, you know, some idea about timing or cost to get some of our old records in there, just because I think that things get pulled up a lot and it sort of becomes an issue of like, what happened when? And was there ever a blah blah in that property? The interoperability issue is really important. Um, just going to say that having sat through this painful process with the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, where we had to get data from different agencies and we ended up with one agency that had a really hard time providing us with data that could be used with any of the other agency's datas, data systems was really difficult. I think that's sometimes a bigger issue with legacy systems rather than new systems. I do think a demonstration would be interesting. And I did want to ask how, you know, we have had this question about every new system we are about to bring up about whether there is safety from hackers. And I'm wondering about how confidential the data that goes into the system is in the first place? And, um, if there is information just on, you know, security. Thanks.
Would you like me to start? Um, yeah, so just big pic, I'll, uh, this will be my role, right? Normally is I'll do big picture and then, um, send it over to the technical experts for more detail. But, um, we did plan for this type of, um, uh, online permitting system in the, we didn't know exactly what it would cost, but we had, um, planned money for that in the budget. And the reason is, um, right now, if you are, um, a homeowner in Fairfax and you want to remodel your bathroom, you must come to our counter while it's open. It's not very customer friendly and it's very outmoded. And if you want information about where you are in the process, you need to contact staff. You can't look it up yourself. You can't look it up after you get home from work or, um, put in a permit, you know, on the weekend. You can't do any of that. So, um, those are some of the reasons why this is coming forward. And it is very typical for jurisdictions to have software of this nature for those reasons, because it's really, you know, about customer service as well as records. And then I would say one thing is, um, in terms of keeping records, you know, backed up in the cloud where they're safe from flood and fire that we experience right here in town hall. We have to start sometime. And so no time like the present, right? We can start now. Going back in time is, it tends to be more expensive and a different process, but at least we can start. And I'll turn it over to Jeff to give some more detail on some of the questions.
No, I think that was a pretty good, pretty good response. Um, the one thing I will add though, in terms of going back in time, it's like, cause I went through this with another jurisdiction, whereas once you have the, the permit types established, then it's just a data entry exercise. You can just have, um, I mean, it's still a project that somebody has to do, but somebody can sit there and populate old permits and slowly bring them back up. But you have to have the system in place before you can do any of that.
Okay, council member Cotrona.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, some of the public comment was, was really, really helpful. So thank y'all. I guess I had two questions. The first one may be for staff, the second one maybe for Jenny, if she's still with us. The, so I, you know, full disclosure, when I was in grad school and took my planning classes for public administration, we did have presentations from groups like OpenGov, which have come a long way now that I think like that outfit has like 700 employees and has worked with thousands of, or at least a thousand municipalities. So they definitely have some reps under their, under their belt in terms of like how many folks that they've worked with. Uh, I get, I understand that Infilla is more of a startup in a way and sort of trying to make their way by partnering with municipalities of different size in the Bay Area. I'm curious about the actual like town application. So Infilla versus an OpenGov. My first question is, you get, you got demos from both, it sounds like. The grant that was received for implementation, is that only for Infilla? Or is that something that could be used for another, um, program or software company?
Yeah, it's specifically for Infilla.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Uh, the other question is, uh, the demo I, I saw for OpenGov way back when was with the city of Sausalito, which was really cool to see it being used in Marin. So I, I know that that service is used in Marin. But I've, I saw it used for like budget transparency and being able to sort of look back at prior budgets and things like that. I'm curious that, you know, we're talking about planning stuff specifically for this application, but are there opportunities to have other types of transparency and accountability services with a service like Infilla? Or is that something that is specific to a more, um, like, uh, an older or a larger organization like OpenGov? Do you know?
Well, I can, I can have Jenny talk about if they're planning, if they have greater plans than just the planning and building software. But right now I believe they're just focused on just the planning, building, you know, software, maybe business licenses.
Yeah, the reason I, the reason I ask is because I, I'm interested in some of those other things. I mean, there are folks in the room where we've been chatting back and forth about the history of road repair budgets and things like that. And it's really inconvenient for all of us to go through PDFs of our budgets and try to pull that information into Excel so we can have conversations about this. So like I have other interests about these things and I think it is pertinent to this discussion because if there are providers that have other services that could be provided, it would be great to work with those folks and not just pigeonhole ourselves to like one contract for one sort of service. So I guess that's, that's where I'm coming from.
That, that is a fair point. And, and a lot of those, those companies that have those other services are just a lot more expensive. So we were, we were kind of trying to be cost conscious with, with that sort of approach. Yeah.
And so when he's asking, I was going to piggyback on this one. Um, he is asking about, you know, OpenGov, which has all these other services. The whole startup fee and everything is, uh, that you have quoted in here for OpenGov would be just for the planning module? Uh, or would it be for startup for any of their services? I mean, is it specific to just?
Yeah, it would just be for the planning and building.
So there'd be an add-on or something if we expanded it to other types of?
Yeah, that would be kind of a different, um, that'd be kind of a, a different bid, if you will. We'd have to get a different proposal for those additional services.
So there's not just one startup fee that can be expanded. This is a totally, it's not like module by module. It's, this is a totally separate.
Right, right, yeah.
If I, if I may just add, um, so we, we've talked about this and, um, I also have an interest in, you know, more, there's all kinds of like, um, budget tools where people are allowed to, you know, kind of do different modeling on their own. Those kinds of things are of interest to me. One of the things that we talked about was, um, there are larger, you know, software companies that have grown and they tend to do some things very well and other things not as well. And so we have to always balance this. Can we, can we get an integrated system? Or if we buy something that is, um, covers a whole bunch of bases, but does some of them very poorly? Is that the way we want to go? Um, and so we've experienced that actually with Tyler. It works the way that the finance department needs it.
Can you also explain what Tyler?
Yes.
Okay.
So Tyler's a, is a software company. It's a very, uh, a much older, uh, software company. And they offer modules for business license and, uh, online payments and, um, or credit card payments and, um, other things. And, um, they, they were chosen by Fairfax before, you know, before I got here. And, um, they seem to work well for the kind of, um, day-to-day, financial transactions that the finance department needs. But the, um, credit card, uh, acceptance and other features have not gone well in Fairfax. And we've actually, um, stopped paying for those because we're not able to use them. So there is a balance there and it, it's not always, you know, easy to know which is the right balance. But right now I think we're, we're moving towards getting the right software for the specific tasks that we're trying to do.
And so I don't mean to belabor this, but I think it's important and we aren't, you know, um, the, the recommendation you brought forward says, you know, you found two, there are, there are a bunch of different ones that are used. You found two that could be good and one you think is a little bit better. It's also sweetened by, uh, a grant that helps cover the year one costs. Do you know if OpenGov is good at the, these sorts of activities in addition to the other things that I was, like, you brought that forward as like a secondary recommendation, but it seemed like it was mostly the cost that was the concern? Is that correct? It's not about the, the value?
I think the, I think between, if you're, if you're going to do a comparison between Infilla and OpenGov, they both had strengths within terms of kind of the web interface, the transparency, kind of being, being able to kind of for a homeowner to easily navigate the system. And they're both very modern and kind of forward-looking, so that, that was, that was good. So, um, OpenGov, as you mentioned, was, is, is a lot bigger. And so the part of the deal with Infilla is we get a lot of kind of personalized, they call it a white glove treatment, um, to help us get the operating system set up. So we get a lot of personalized attention and it is a little bit less expensive. Um, so that's the primary, primary advantage. And then of course Jenny would probably say that they're way better than OpenGov. She could, if she, if you want, if you want her marketing pitch, she can probably give that to you. But the, um, I think that they, they were both very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were both very good companies though. They, and they had a lot of, um, a lot of similarities and some differences, but a lot of similarities just in terms of the transparency and the kind of the forward-looking and the being able to kind of, kind of customize it down towards your size of jurisdiction. So.
Got it. Two final questions. Sorry. First is, um, to Jenny. I tried to, so it's, I've seen OpenGov before. It's easy to go to the Sausalito website and see what those platforms look like. It was harder to find whether going on your website, um, or going on these other client websites, being able to see like in Sonoma County, for instance, what part of like permit Sonoma you all power? And which parts maybe are legacy that they're still transitioning over to? And I know you all are, are, you know, a newer, uh, business. So I, I was just curious, like, I guess it all gets back to like not seeing demos here. Like if the pub, like I think the council is one thing and it could, we can be ood and odd, but if the public doesn't get to see a demo of how these things actually work, I think there's an issue there maybe because then everyone's going to be surprised uh, when one day everything is, looks a little bit different on our website. And I'm sure people would get used to it, but to not see it here tonight and not being able to really see Infilla in, in action on these client websites, uh, is, it gives me like a little bit of pause just about making a decision this evening. But I was going to ask Jenny, um, the, the permit Sonoma website, like what, what, what did, have you all done on that website versus, um, what are you not doing on that website? Cause some things had said like powered by Infilla, which was like an FAQ or something. But I, I didn't really see that from the actual data dashboard stuff, that it wasn't clear to me that you all have created or are running all of those things currently. So just wanted to check in on that.
Yeah, sure. Was your specific question, uh, which parts are Infilla and which parts are legacy software? Is that your question?
Yeah, yeah, like, like, is there a place to see the Infilla user experience, like in action on any of these client websites yet?
Uh, we're in the middle of implementation with, uh, Sonoma County. Uh, something that's come out already is their, um, their transient rental application that you can see. And we're starting to roll out other portions and, and we're doing it like Jeff said, in a very white glove approach. So that way it's a slow rollout and it's, it's very considered. But that's one area that we operate in. And then there is something called the forum, which, uh, the team for planning and building are quite excited about, which is searchable organized interpretations that then convert to a public facing FAQs that you saw.
Got it. Thank you.
I just want to interrupt. We have, it's time for the 10 o'clock rule. Town council will review the agenda at 10 o'clock to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. I think we can finish this, uh, the agenda, but I would also ask, I'm, I'm going to make a comment after we make a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rules. Would somebody like to make a motion to waive the 10 o'clock?
Still moved. I'll second.
Okay, so that was council member Cotrona, council member Ackerman. And roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, Mayor, council member Ackerman.
Press on.
Council member Hillman.
Yes.
Council member Cotrona.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
All eyes.
Um, you know, I think we're going to beat this one to death. And I want to make a quick comment and then make, make a suggestion. Some of you know that I worked at the Air District for a number of years. And one of the many programs I implemented was the asbestos program and the J numbers. When I got there, there were boxes that went back to, uh, the beginning of the Air District in 1955 with J numbers. And what I brought to the Air District was an online system to pay and get your J numbers. We had staff who were, um, reluctant for change. We brought this in and I would also argue I worked on very big systems for software as a service and small systems. I think the price that you're talking about is reasonable for a small system. But, um, once we got that system onboard and we had a lot of the white glove treatment, we also installed a secure computer that customers could come in, get their J numbers, pay for them online. My staff who were very reluctant to change were really happy. And it saved us an incredible amount of time. We had a lot of security involved in that system. But I feel like we are kind of beating this one to death. I think one of the things this council tends to do is we micromanage a lot of our staff decisions. And I think we're getting into a lot. And I think we're getting into a lot of the weeds here and that's valuable. But I also think what's been raised is this is a very new company. And I think it would be a good idea, I'm just going to throw this out before we continue to beat this one to death, to continue this to another meeting and have both OpenGov and Infilla do a demonstration. And I think that would just be a better course of action because there's a lot of questions here. There's questions raised by members of the audience. And I think, I personally think this is a good system, but yeah, something that's been created last year, this year. I think we need to see more. And so I would ask our staff, Jeff, what do you think about that? Having a demonstration, maybe we do it at the November 6th meeting, maybe we do it at the December 6th. This has been hanging fire for quite a while and I appreciate, we appreciate all your work to really research this. But rather than making a decision tonight, it sure seems like that'd be maybe a better course of action. What do you think, Jeff? Thank you, Michael. We don't need, I would like to hear from staff.
Yeah, I think if, if you would like to see a demo, we could, we could do that at the next meeting. Yeah.
And I would like that to be with OpenGov as well as Infilla. And maybe we don't make the decision at that meeting, but let's do a demo. And I see Heather has her hand up.
I, I wonder if you might like to consider a subcommittee so that we hopefully don't miss an opportunity for grant funding if.
I don't think that's a good idea. I think the public would like to see a demonstration. So I don't think this is something that should be done with just a subcommittee. So I'd rather, let's bring a demo. I know our November 6th agenda is going to be pretty packed, but if we can do that, and I would bring it for both. And I would suggest that rather than making, maybe we could have an option of making a decision at that meeting. But let's, let's do that rather than continue to ask a lot of questions. And I think Infilla has done a lot and we appreciate the opportunity for grant funding. But I think it's better for us to take our time. So with that, I would ask for a motion to continue this to November 6th meeting or a later date.
I will make that motion to continue to the November 6th meeting or a later date.
One second.
Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ackerman.
I actually would vote no on that, but.
Okay.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cottrell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. So that motion passes for, for one. Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for bringing this. I don't think anybody up here is thinking that it's not a good idea. I think it's just, you know, measure, measure twice, cut once kind of thing.
Next.
All right. Well, we are on to our fourth agenda item. Authorize the town manager to work with Marin Clean Energy, MCE, to implement an incentive program for Fairfax residents to sign up for MCE Deep Green, which is 100% renewable energy. I'd like to ask Town Manager Abrams to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Wow, Christine is fast today. Thank you. So this will just be a brief presentation. This is actually an item that Mayor Kohler suggested. And I want to point out that actually, and you can go ahead to the next slide. She brought this program back in 2015 with a grant of $6,000 from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And this time it would be a very similar project, but this time it would be funded by the town. And the town has funds for this in the Climate and Environment Department, which is detailed in the, in the staff report. Going to the next slide, please. So the program is to expend no more than $6,000 of the town's funds. And I want to note that right now, everyone in Fairfax has the option of getting their electricity through MCE or PG&E. The light green option is less expensive than PG&E. And the deep green option, which is 100% renewable, is about $5 a month more. And so the proposal is to offer that subsidy to get, get to deep green for one year for about. Sorry, go ahead.
I just want to say that's for new signups to deep green. It's not for those of us who are already on deep green. It's an incentive to create more signups. Go ahead.
Exactly. So the point is to, to provide climate action and really help people get to that better level. So this would be something that we would like to promote. If you agree that we would like to promote in the newsletter, the town newsletter on the website. And we would then take that to the Climate Action Committee and ask them to help us promote it, you know, at the tabling events and other things that they do. This is one of the more easy and impactful things that Fairfax residents can do. It's really just a signup. And MCE will make it very easy for us to provide this incentive. So that's nice. And on the next slide, you will get a better sense of the climate impact. So this is the, the power content label for the various options for MCE. And with that, I.
And just to clarify, deep green, there was a error in the staff report. Deep green is 50% solar and 50% wind.
Yes, as you see in the, in the power content label here. And so I'll open it up to questions from the council members. And also I want to make sure you're aware that Bridget Whiffler, our new climate action coordinator is on the line and we're really very pleased to have her and wanted to take this opportunity to introduce her as well. She has a background in environmental work in local government and has already done a deep dive on getting some of our compliance issues in order. So that's wonderful to see. And also on the line is Sebastian Kahn from MCE. So you have questions for MCE. We've been working together with the mayor's help. So thank you.
I just want to add that this is really just $6,000 for 100 households, new households to sign up to deep green. There is no other cost by the town and MCE would put this together after the MOU as a bill credit. So there would be very seamless for folks who sign up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Town Manager Abrams. I would like to open this matter up. No questions here?
I don't have any questions, but I'll make comments later as to there.
I have one question. Do we know when this came in 2015, how long it took to exhaust that Bay Area quality? You do?
Yeah, it, it took a little longer than a year. It was about a year and a half. Ultimately, we did a lot of tabling with the Climate Action Committee. We had MCE staff signing folks up. But I will also say just one piece that's missing from the presentation is because of all our efforts, Fairfax has the highest deep green signups of any of the 37, soon to be 38 MCE jurisdictions. We're at about 13.4% and most of them are about eight and a half percent. So if that helps.
And if I could just add, so in the MOU, it talks about the program lasting up to 24 months. So that gives us time to get that information out. And I'm sure that if we didn't exhaust that $6,000, we could extend it further.
And just a question for Mayor Kohler, who serves on the MCE Board of Directors. At one point in time, back when Walt Vernon was Chair of Climate Action, there'd been discussions about like the eventual conversion of all light green accounts to deep green, maybe. Just while we're on the topic, has that, what ever happened to that?
Well, they, because renewable energy is, the costs have gone up and it's hard to procure. And because of the KISO's limit on how much can go in, that has not happened. And that was never a discussion of MCE to convert to 100%. We're inching up with, with light green. At one point, about a year and a half ago, MCE decided for all new accounts for new jur, new jurisdictions, they would sign them up to deep green first. And what ended up happening is very difficult to procure enough renewable power. But with this, we verified this would be incremental. So, and I've talked to our CEO, I've talked to Sebastian Kahn, who's our contact. This will not impact that, but it's just, we're in a weird place right now with renewables. There's just a lot of competition.
Yeah, that's, that's extremely helpful. Thank you so much for that intel.
Okay. If there are no more questions from the council or comments, I'd like to open this matter up to public discussion.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. All right. So I'm a big fan of MCE and anyone helping them out. That being said, there's some contractual concerns here. And there's some staff report concerns. There's no cost comparison in terms of what you're incentivizing people to do. Does deep green, and I'm a deep green customer. Does deep green? How does anybody know if, if the town's money is being spent on this? Are, is the town giving them a better rate or is this a virtue signaling thing? Everyone should have that decision on their own. The question is, when you're spending public money, what are the incumbent controls on spending that public money? And if you're going to do it, if it is legitimate to do it, which it'd be great if it is. Like I said, I'm a fan. Why not do it with more money? You're spending a lot of money on other things. Why only $6,000 on this when you're throwing around all kinds of other big budget expenditures? Why not go for it and try to get as many people on deep green as you can, rather than just slow roll this? Why back off if this is the intent? Then I'm really curious. How come there's no comparison in this staff report with PG&E? Not to say that PG&E is popular these days with the rate increases, but they've come a long ways, apparently. They tout having some very good clean energy. I think there should be a comparison here. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Following up on what Todd said, I do think that there could be a much more comprehensive matrix that illustrates the differences in what's available by both programs between PG&E and MC. If Fairfax is spending $6,000 to subsidize, which it really is, to bring these people over, does that mean you're incorporating a certain period of time? And then once the subsidy wears out, then they jump up to a higher rate. I also think that could be a little bit clearer. So if you could address that, that'd be appreciated.
If there are no more speakers on the floor, are there any speakers on Zoom?
There is one speaker on Zoom, E. Bush. You are unmuted. There are no speakers on Zoom.
Okay. I'm now closing public comment. I'll bring it back to the council and.
Before we do that, just a couple of things. Heather can put up the power content label again. That shows the difference. PG&E is more expensive, light green. And also if you put the power content label back up, it shows you the differences. And the other thing to remember is PG&E uses a lot of nuclear. So Diablo Canyon for one. So there is a difference. And the way the program works, and this is part of the MOU, is MCE sets up a bill credit and the bill credit lasts for 12 months for a subscriber. At the end of the 12 months, it goes away and that person can opt out of deep green, go back to light green. They can go back to PG&E if that's what they prefer. And, or they can stay on deep green and it's about $5 more a month. So those are the questions and I'll bring it back or I'll let our mayor, who actually wants to make some comments, let him go first.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments on this. One is just to talk about the last time that this program was run. That yes, the credits expired, but many people who had been subsidized retained, kept using deep green, which is kind of the point of it. It's only $5 more a month. And that is, you know, that's the price that many people are very happy and willing to pay to protect our climate. And it's more just letting them know that it's an option. And I mean, realistically, like this is the kind of thing where, you know, we're spending $6,000 because that's, we know that that amount worked when we ran the program last time. And also I believe I, we heard some comments about how there is limited clean energy, like we can't just give everybody in the world clean energy. And so I'm, you know, I'm not an expert on this. I don't know for sure, but perhaps 6,000 or I think, was it 100? How many people exactly?
It's 100 households.
So maybe it could be that 100 households is, you know, the feasible limit for right now, or what's feasible to kind of just like switch to all at once with no extra development.
And one thing to add, when we did this the last time, we actually had, there was a lot of tabling. Bruce was the Chair of Climate Action before he was on the council and we did a lot of tabling. I was the liaison at that time. And we actually, at the end of that time, got something like 147 people to sign up to deep green through all that action. So this is really salting things and we don't have unlimited funds. And it's not about getting everybody to sign up, but I want to point out again, we have the highest rate of deep green signups. So our town has really stepped up. Looks like Councilmember Cottrell wants to say.
Oh, okay. All right. I can go after Councilmember.
Well, I was just going to, to say that yes, I, I was pretty heavily involved with this, as was the entire Climate Action Committee at the time that now Mayor Kohler, who was at that time, the liaison, council liaison, that's the position I hold now, council liaison to the CAC. But Barbara brought that opportunity to us. And it was a couple of things I'll say. One is that, that there doesn't seem to be any drop off on, on people who stayed with deep green. They, they seem to have stayed with it. So it does seem to work as intended. The thing that I really liked about it, and I support this proposal tonight for this reason, is that it really led to some good conversations. We did do a lot of tabling, but the, the point of the tabling wasn't just those additional deep green customers. The point was to talk with people. And this was a good opportunity to be able to have conversations about energy. And they were just fantastic. I really enjoyed that. I was at the Climate Action, Climate Action Committee meeting last night and the, the CAC is supportive of this. And the CAC is supportive of this. We haven't discussed yet and we'll probably discuss next month the what our plan would be. This this program wouldn't be starting until the beginning of the year. It'll take a couple of months to get it set up, but we'll be beginning to discuss our tabling and who wants to commit to how much tabling and so forth. But that's that certainly feels to me like this sort of main point of it is is those conversations. So anyway, I support it.
Go for it.
I also support it. Thanks for bringing it, Mayor Kohler. I think if this continues to prove to be a way to up that percentage of residents using or households using deep green, I think I'd I'd hope that the Climate Action Committee and the liaison continue to bring this forward. You know, annually or, you know, at a regular pace so that we can inch up and and really achieve, you know, more building electrification and more decarbonization of the the built environment. So thank you.
It's a great way to educate people in the public about green energy or deep green energy or green energy in general. I think I was one of the people that signed up for it originally, and I still have deep green. So I just think it raises awareness. If nothing else, then I have no problems with it.
I want to say that my household is also a deep green household. And I just think, you know, it's it's such a it's a very easy thing to switch to. And subsidizing it just makes it a little bit easier for families who either don't know about it or, you know, haven't been able to like break into the space yet. But, you know, I'm very, I support it completely if that really means anything, but yeah.
Thanks a lot. Councilmember Hellman, did you want to make a comment?
No, I'm I'm supportive and agree with all the comments shared.
Just want to share that before we go, Sebastian Kahn is online. He is our contact for Fairfax. Sebastian, would you like to make a couple of short comments? I think our Madam Clerk is getting you up and running.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, everyone. Sebastian Kahn, Senior Community Development Manager with MCE. Not much further comment to provide this evening that the council has not already covered. I did want to respond quickly to one point that was raised about reporting out to the town just about what the metrics look like relative to this program. That is something that would be included in the MOU. And we would be more than happy to provide regular updates to the council and to the town about kind of the uptake of adoption and deep green. That information is largely available on our website already. But if we want to do something that's more specific to these hundreds subsidized accounts and kind of the progress being made towards that, that's something that we could very easily do.
Thank you, Sebastian. I also want to mention that MCE is having its retreat in Pittsburgh next week. And I am going to challenge my colleagues on MCE to step up because nobody has created this incentive program other than the town of Fairfax. Others have tabled. Nobody's gotten close to us. So I will be challenging folks. So with that, Mayor, would you like to ask for a motion?
Yeah, thank you all. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with Marin Clean Energy and pay up to $6,000 to implement an incentive program for Fairfax residents to sign up for MCE Deep Green, 100% renewable energy.
Second.
Hold a second that. Oh, you've already did.
Let Councilmember Ackerman second.
Yeah, I'll absolutely let him do that. That's fine.
But I can I just add one quick comment. It also was Fairfax's honor to be the first town to, as our town operations, sign up for MCE. This was long before my time on the council. But thanks to that council for for stepping up and seeing that opportunity.
And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Katrono.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, and let's have an honorary vote.
Yes.
All eyes.
This is great. Almost through it, you guys.
Okay. We'll now consider the consent calendar. These items can be approved all at once unless any council member or staff member wishes to discuss a specific item. Would anyone like to pull an item?
I just have a question. Can I ask the question first? On the, we heard it earlier in the evening, so I figured I was ask it now, get out of the way. On the financial statement for August, we see our expenses exceeding revenues. This is part of a cyclical thing for municipal budgets and when money hits our accounts, et cetera. But I was wondering if you would be able to speak to that a little bit just to address it.
Very succinctly, on the cyclical nature of our revenues. So most of the revenues for Fairfax come from property taxes. And they are governed by the Teeter Act. We have a Teeter Agreement, as do all of the jurisdictions within Marin with the county. And they pay twice a year. So right around December 15th and then in June. And so it is very normal for us to see revenues in that kind of lumpy arrangement, if you will. And that we don't have any expectation that month to month you would match revenues to expenditures. For that reason, we're very different from a private business in that way.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll open the meeting to public comment for the consent calendar. This is.
And reminder, it's two minutes for the entire consent calendar.
Yeah, why would it be anymore? I mean, everybody can say what they want in seven seconds. I'm only going to address one issue, which I've addressed in the past. And that's the minutes. The minutes are incredibly incomplete. I had mentioned previously that for about the same amount of money that we're paying whoever we're paying, you could get a court reporter who would be able to verbatim record the minutes. So as I was looking through the minutes, I came across what I was reported to have said regarding the funding for fixing the roads. And it really was not what I said. What I said is that you could do a straight assessment if needed, along with the monies that should be in a segregated account. Cut back on spending on non essentials and possibly include a quarter percent sales tax. Since Larkspur did a quarter, did a all of their repairs off of their sales tax. So when I look at the minutes, that's not at all what it says. So you just gave $6,000 of town money for a worthy cause to get people on deep green. I can understand that. But what you can't pay, what is it, $10 more an hour? For somebody to take down everything so that the minutes are complete and at least be accurate? I don't understand. Why don't you want the minutes to be accurate? Why don't you want them to reflect what people have said?
Christine, the timer isn't working. I mean, I know the bell worked, but the timer wasn't going. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. I'd like you to pull items five, six, seven, nine, and 13 for public comment to allow more than 13.3 seconds per the nine agenda items, the consent agenda items. It's denying public comment if you only allow 13 seconds per item. And you've never ever pulled one every single time I've asked. You are stifling public comment and stuffing the consent calendar. That being said, this comment that Councilman Katrono just brought up about, actually, it was Katrono mentioned it and Town Manager Heather Abrams gave an explanation of matching. Well, this is on page two of number five. Current total budget. This is an annual budget, not a month in changing revenue situation. We have a current total budget as per this income statement saying $13,195,110. And we have a current expense total budgeted of $14,732,000, $14,732,338 for a deficit of $1,537,728. That is an annual statement unless something doesn't make sense here. And it doesn't look like it's affected by matching. Item six, I'm gonna go as fast as I can, but I'd like to ask for extra time. I agree with Mark.
Fifteen seconds.
This is frequently inaccurate. Items nine, this is far less expense than hanging the other banners. That's great that it's less, but why would we pay so much last time?
Hello, council. Actually, Barbara, this smiles on your face really inappropriate when one of your constituents come up here to smile or come up to speak. We came up here and laughed at all your gaffes. You actually tried to break the meeting down. My comments again to the consent calendar. For the last 22 years, I've been in more council meetings than all you guys, probably more than any two of you guys. Before that time, and over 24 years or 22 years ago, Frank's been in more meetings. And what I can tell you, even 15 years ago, if there was a public concern about the consent calendar, it was always taken off the consent. It was brought up because the town was not so opaque. And the town wanted to try to engage the confidence and the continuity of the public supporting them. But now, every time we use the consent calendar and are things that are just ministerially approved, which should be like, hey, we're renewing our insurance, renewing our UUT, things like that, I accept. But when the the public does have a question, the only reason you wouldn't want to bring it out is because you're insecure of the information or you're trying to say, oh, oh, let's have a policy so this one we can bury here. I encourage you to engage the public. And when the public has a legitimate question, bring it up, kind of like the old days before this current council sat. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on Zoom?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Okay, I would like to bring this back to the council for a motion.
Happy to make a motion to move consent.
I'm second.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Katrono.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash, yes. Mayor Kohler.
Are there any items the council would like to see on a future agenda?
So council reports and comments are actually in the consent calendar that we just approved. So they're written and then go to future.
Okay, now, are there any future agenda items that anyone on the council would like to see?
I just wanted to confirm my understanding that we're going to be discussing the current and potential new ordinances related to the Perry Park encampment that shortly after the election.
I'll repeat. So I think your question was, are you going to hear the petitions that have been submitted?
I mean, I had specifically requested a few times after the election that we, as the council and community, discuss the current ordinance that relates to that encampment and any potential future ordinances.
It would be helpful for us to have a council discussion so we know what to put in that ordinance so that when it comes to first reading.
No, that's what I'm saying. We would discuss what.
Bring a discussion about this option.
What changes we want to the current and potential new.
Yes, we can do that.
Great.
Great. For December. Just to be clear.
I'm sorry. I want to make sure I'm clear for December.
The November meeting is after the election?
It's one day.
It's one day after. So I think we're going to have a petition on the homelessness issue on November 6. But I think December would be the time to have that other discussion.
For having a full discussion with options that you would then select to direct us to draft the ordinance and then it would come back for a first reading.
What's the petition?
There is a petition by one of the folks who was here tonight to have us agendize the homeless encampment issues.
Okay, okay. My, my, there's lots of concerns related to this. But a new concern that has been raised is this, you know, the spring season of the Ball Park. And so there, if if we are going to make any changes and if we are going to actually start enforce enforcing, we don't have a lot of lead time to do that. So in my mind, the sooner the better.
Can I ask a quick question? Because I'm, I know there's a petition, but can we tentatively schedule something for the next meeting and then try to work with the petitioners so that that becomes the item that?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Okay, so I'm gonna disagree. We have a lot for the November 6 meeting. That's the day after the election. There's a lot that would have to happen between now and then. I would ask for a vote from the council. If we'd rather wait till December, through the petition, there will be some discussion. So I would ask for a vote to wait till December to have more of that discussion that you're asking for, Councilmember Katrono and Councilmember Hellman.
I think just respectfully, like Vice Mayor Blash and I probably have some some updates that would be good to share sooner to kind of get the ball rolling.
I think you could do that during the discussion after we hear the petition.
I, I mean, I'm in favor of the November meeting personally.
Well, I'll ask for a vote. I'm going to make a motion that we do that at the December meeting. And I would ask for a second on that motion. Michael, you're not on this dais, so I would ask for a second.
What is the motion?
The motion is that we wait till December to actually have a substantive discussion on any ordinance about the homeless issues and any ordinance that would prevail on park type issues. Rather than at the November meeting where we will hear a lot about homeless encampment issues. Okay, so the only thing, in order for me to draft any sort of an ordinance, I need direction. And so wherever you're going to have that direction.
That that's sort of my point, right?
We're talking about having that discussion in November.
If we're, if we're saying we don't have that discussion where you're getting direction till December, that means the ordinance doesn't come back till January at the earliest, right? So that's kind of, you know, why I'm trying. And I like the idea that Councilmember Katrono raised is like, let's work with the community on this rather than have them feel like they're forcing this on us, which, you know, I don't think they are. But why don't we partner with them and?
We're gonna hear it every month. Any, we're gonna hear it in November anyway, so.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think there's a motion on.
There's a motion, so let's.
I mean, I just, can I ask another question? Sorry. I mean, often when we say we're gonna have an agenda item, we sort of have like, I'd prefer it to be in the next two months. And it seems like now we're trying to make sure that it's exactly one month or the other. Do we have to have an exact month at which we are going to hear it? I mean, it gets set in the agenda setting meeting, I guess. But I'm just wondering, do we tonight need to have something that says an exact month?
And I would just say this, this is October 16. And I would just say this, this is October 16. The next meeting is November 6. I think we tend to, when we want to get things done, we jam it. That's a couple of weeks, you know, to get the agenda out, to get things done. I really wish that one of the things we would consider doing is being more thoughtful in these approaches and not hurrying to get something.
It's a, it is a big item. We do have other stuff on the November meeting. Maybe folks would entertain a special meeting just on this item, given how much public interest there is on this item. So there's that.
I think at this point, I mean, you know, we are burning out our staff. We're burning out everyone by hurrying. I think we can have some discussion with the petition and give some direction to staff at the November meeting to bring something in December, rather than, again, this hurrying to do something because we're reacting to a lot of concerns, which are valid. But I think we tend to be rushing things. Town Attorney, did you want to say something?
No.
Town Manager, did you want to say something?
I do think it's your, it's up to your discretion what we can do in the next two weeks, right? There's posting that there's limitations to that. So I would just like some grace in terms of, you know, it would be a discussion, not necessarily a proposed ordinance at that point.
So two things. One, there's a motion on the floor. I don't think anyone seconded it. So I would offer a substitute motion to bring a discussion in November at the regular November meeting. And I would like to work with the Vice Mayor to coordinate with staff about the layout of that staff report to guide the discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, you need to sit down now, Michael. Sit down. Sit down now. You're out of order. Just scavenge. All right. So, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call, roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Well, I, the main thing I'm hearing is from the town manager, I would like to ask again, is this impractical to be ready for this? Or it sounds like Councilmember Katrona, and I didn't hear Vice Mayor Blash respond to that, but is that possibility of working with staff to get ready for this? I feel like we need some, we're going to need some information in order to have this discussion. And that's, that's my concern.
I think the town attorney has something, and I would like to move this along. And I don't want to belabor. I just wanted to reiterate that I'm happy to draft an ordinance. I just have to have direction in order.
But we're not saying an ordinance for November.
We understand this is not an ordinance. This is prior to the ordinance. The question is, are we ready to even have that discussion? But we will have the discussion. We will have a discussion because we've already said we're going to hear the petition in November. So it's just like, are we going to do it twice?
Let's do the vote. Okay.
I guess I would vote yes then. Go ahead and plunge into it.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Katrona.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Okay, I just need a little clarification on what we're voting on. We're voting to have a discussion in addition to the discussion that will be brought by the petitioners. What is the, what is the motion?
Yes. Yes.
Would, would it be correct to say this would be the discussion brought by the petitioners? A petition is.
No.
A petition saying.
That separates.
Just an agenda item. Can we just finish this vote, please? Council, Vice Mayor Blash, just vote yes or no.
Okay, I just needed clarification on what we were voting.
So it would be a second item, which would be discussing options for a potential ordinance in the future.
They're talking about November, and I think that would be a really tough hurdle to get over, to get that much information together fast. I could probably do it. I'm not sure for a start, Kitten. That's the one thing I'm worried about. I mean, otherwise I would say yes. So.
Are you voting yes or no?
I'll just say yes, but I'm a little worried about it.
Okay, I'll vote no. Thank you. So motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Town Manager Abrams, do you have any announcements?
Yes. So for the town manager's report, I'll be quick. I wanted to let you know we've been working on the designs for the Fire Station 21 here in Fairfax. We have investigated several different ways that we could borrow the funds needed for that. We have met with Sleepy Hollow Fire District and also with the County of Marin. County of Marin stands ready to provide that loan should we need it, or when we need it, I should say. And we are also working on a meeting with County OEM to discuss options for seeking FEMA funding for that. And then we also are working with the designer and to really get to the point where we can do a page flip of all the design with the permit technicians to make sure that we've accounted for everything that we need in order to get an updated cost estimation or reestimate. So all of that is very intensive and continuing on. And then I also wanted to make sure everyone was aware, we now have a red flag warning starting Thursday night going through Saturday evening. And Christine has loaded that information up on the town's website and provided that to the public. So I'm very excited about that. At this point, we are not under a PSPS warning, but other counties are. And so that may change. So that's something to watch for the newsletter item or special newsletter. We would send that out. And of course, PG&E is the lead on that, and they would send that out to their customers. So with that, if there are any other questions.
Just want to point out for folks, when there's a red flag warning, please get your go bags together, get your pet crates together. Things can change very quickly. That's one of the reasons we did the evacuation drill. So just be ready. Thank you. And you do adjourn then.
Okay, that concludes tonight's meeting. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Renee Mary Berglin, David Glick, and Joe Bruce. Thank you all for joining us tonight.